...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I think that the exception of one open meeting we had about the new bylaws, this might be the biggest crowd so far, so that's great news. I think I know why most of you are here, and so we're going to skip ahead.
Liz, I hate to interrupt, but we actually put the schedule away for a reason. The library has a meeting at the same time if we can get rid of them.
All right. Sorry. I was really trying to help you all out, so I'll take the library.
Those are her words.
I'm ready.
Well, we're only five minutes.
That's it.
Okay, I'm.
Barbara Golden, Library Director, and my understanding is we're just supposed to give you an update on how we're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
So, right now, as of the end of December, we're right within our budget, actually a little under. We are having windows replaced. We've gotten Mark Clark to give us an estimate of $1,730 to replace three large windows that have real molding problems. And we, a few of us went in front of the Finance Committee, can you hear me okay, to alert them, you know, that this extra expense is coming up. The HVAC upgrade, which we got permission to use last year, last spring, I think it was, we do have a consultant now. It's the same company, Robert Hole Engineering, that took care of the town hall. So, they're gonna come in with statistics specs to put on the state site. Our accreditation, the, as most of you know, every year, there's a state formula that we have to have a certain amount come from the town so that we can get accreditation. So, I have the figure for FY '17. It's $133,396. And we also have a certain amount that, I can give you a copy of this if you want. We also have a materials expenditure requirement to get accreditation. We have to spend a certain amount on all kinds of materials, including eBooks, DVDs, and I have that figure for this year, which is $26,013. So, that has to do with accreditation. We're fine on the number of hours we're open a year, which is another consideration for accreditation. The Friends continue to have a lot of fundraisers, and Wine and Beer is coming up February 5th, so I have a flyer for that. And that's one of the fundraisers. And then they do, let's see, it's called Mini Golf, and they're gonna do a book sale, and they had a craft fair. So, they give us a lot of funding. Some of it goes for books because the town doesn't cover the whole book budget, but we are getting more from the town than we used to get for the book budget, and we really appreciate that. And then, we're having a lot of programs. We have a lot of youth programs, a lot of adult programs. They're on our website. We're, we sort of feel like we're a little bit of a community center in a way, and people come for a lot of reasons, but one of them is the programming and to get, you know, materials and books. So, that's an update.
Is that a date?
Yeah.
It sounds like the library's in the best shape they've been in for a while.
I think so, especially like with the upgrade for the HVAC and the book money. We really appreciate that, because we still have to raise money, but it's not as desperate as it has been in the past. Because, you know, the budget we have from the town doesn't include programs or us to go to, like, American Library Association, so some of the fundraising goes for that, too.
One minute.
Yeah, it's a little loud.
Yeah.
But yes, we appreciate it.
Two questions. Do you, parking lot light, does that work?
Yes.
That better than?
It works very well. Thank you. Yeah, Charlie.
Okay. And two, the HVAC and all the rest of that, are you anticipating any more capital expense on that?
Yes, it's prob, we had a meeting. Heather was there with Tom Sears and Tom Quinlan and a couple people from our Building Committee, Maxine, and it will come in higher because it's been a year since those other estimates. We also have to do, what's that call with paying people a certain amount of money that we didn't consider?
Pervailing wage.
Prevailing wage. So, they, the Tom and Tom suggested a way to do it, that if it comes in higher, we will, may not be able to do every single thing on that list, like the boiler, for instance.
All right. So, you anticipating going back to the Capital Committee?
Well, we haven't talked about that yet, but we, the thermostats and that whole thing, and then the air conditioner has to be done, so those would be covered first. Yeah, we probably would have to go back later on, yeah.
Let me know as soon as you know a dollar.
Okay. The consultant's working on it now, so we should have a figure.
Well, just tell Heather. She'll tell me.
Yeah. Heather knows.
Okay.
John, do you have any other questions?
I don't.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything.
Enjoy your meeting.
Yeah.
Can I skip ahead? Okay. So, we're gonna skip ahead to open time for the public so that y'all can go home and watch from there. If you have anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to the podium. You don't need to be called on. Just let us know who you are and where you live.
I think the majority of them are here with me. I just have a statement for the Board, and then I'll let.
Who are you?
Pardon me?
Who are you?
Oh, sorry. Michael Hutchins, 28 Bissonnet Circle.
Thank you.
I'll just have a brief statement, and then I'll let anybody else that might have something to stay, say they can, they can speak. For the most part, I just want to give you a little background on the, on the town or our street and let you know where we stand and how we feel. In June of 2015, the residents of Bissonnet Circle took over the HOA from Sampson, the developer. Each homeowner was well aware of the HOA and its covenants. They each signed it at closing, so they all know what they're responsible for. In those covenants, it was pretty clear what each homeowner involved in the HOA, what they would be responsible for. You know, things that included was maintenance of the water retention areas, the catch basins in those water retention areas, grass removal, snow removal from the sidewalks that do not border a property, but they do border the HOA property. We have two lots, a five-acre lot and a two-and-a-half acre lot that we're responsible for. We knew we had to take care of those, and we agreed to those. But no worse in the covenants did it indicate that the HOA residents would be responsible for plowing the street or sanding at any point. On November 17th, at the Select Board meeting, Mr. Kemp said that they were gonna postpone, or actually, the Board had decided they were gonna postpone the discussion of private streets. The one thing I wanted to say was, even though you might consider us a private street, we're really not a private street. It's just, we're kind of stuck in limbo right now. We took over the HOA, and this problem that has arisen is kind of between the developer and the town. So, granted, you know, the street hasn't actually been taken over, but the residents are kind of stuck in limbo. We don't have any current agreements or attachments to the developer, so we can't go to him and say, hey, plow our street, you still own it, or if it's still deeded to him. In the past, the town has been plowing the street for the last five years, and we've been pretty happy with that, and it seems to work. Now, I, I do understand Mr. Kemp's position, that, you know, he's not budgeted for it, and I do understand that and I get that, but for the residents, it, it's hard for us to understand why the town won't help us out here. I mean, in a town that wants to see increased growth in these, in these new developments, that to bring in extra tax revenue, like our, our art street, we're bringing in probably an extra $186,000 a year in tax revenue, not counting all the other little luxuries, our boats and stuff like that, that we have to pay taxes towards. And we, I said, like, I understand Mr. Kemp's position, but we would really appreciate if the town could help us out in some matter. It's my understanding from talking to a few people, lawyers, this and that, luckily, I have a bank of them at my, at work. They don't do it for me personally, that if the town felt that they needed to be compensated for past services rendered to our street, because it's still in the developer's name, why isn't the town just billing him, pulling his bond? Put a lien on the last property that's still in his name, which is, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's number 34 Bissonnet.
It is, my dear.
Number 34. Bill him for it. I have no problem if you guys go after the developer, because we have no attachments to him. I mean, if he's, you could tell Mr. Sampson to do whatever you want, to plow the street, he's responsible for it, but I think we all know that's not gonna happen. At least, I don't foresee it happening. I could be wrong. I mean, I know this has been an unpleasant experience for Southampton in this particular development and all the delays to reaching the order conditions, I believe it's called, to finish, but really, it does come down to, this is, it's not our fight. It's between Southampton and this developer and the deal that you guys worked out, and he's supposed to be following for you guys. And we just really would appreciate if the town could, you know, help us out or do something. Like I said, bill him if you have to. I'm, I'm happy with that. So, anyways, I don't really have a lot to say. I put a lot in this thing, but I kind of went away from it. I'm too tired to read. But, so in conclusion, the residents of Bissonnet Circle just want to be treated fairly. They want to be treated like the rest of the, the town, because we do feel we're as much part of the town as, as any other street. We don't want to be last on the list or pushed to the side like we don't belong. And the last thing, I'm not throwing a dig here, is plowing and maintaining our street, like it was said in a previous Board meeting, is not a convenience or a safety issue. We find it more of a responsibility as, as being taxpayers that the town should be helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to that issue or any other issue before I?
I'm on the, my name is Robert Sestola. I live at 33 Bissonnet Circle. Along with Dave, Mike, and myself, we're the Board members. I'm also the father of a six-and-a-half-year-old girl, Josephine, who's in Norris, and you know her.
I do.
And we have a lot of parents here. Parents, can all, can you all raise your hands?
They're gonna make me match the kids to parents?
You're gonna say hi to all the kids now?
Oh.
Is there, is there anybody left on Bissonnet to turn the lights off, or are they all here?
We, we, we wanted to have a strong presence here, because we just wanted to know how important this is to all of us, especially our kids, as a safety issue. The bus does come through our street. We have about five bus stops, right? We have about five. And it's really important to us that our kids are safe, that the people that come through the street can drive safely and not be in danger of slipping on any ice or snow. Okay? As Mike said it very succinctly, I just thought I'd bring, bring forward the point of safety and our concern for our kids and the well-being of everyone. And thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just gonna add on to it. My name's Sean Fitzgerald. I'm from 38 Bissonnet, and not gonna add much, but there's a lot of pregnant women, infants, including my three-year-old son, in that street. So, any consideration this Board can take on for that, we would appreciate it very much. So, that's all I have to add.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What else is besides infants and children, as you can bring up?
There really isn't. My name is Dave Melcher. I'm at 23 Bissonnet Circle. And just so that the, the Board is aware, typically, our road doesn't get plowed until at least the day after, if not two or three days after the storm.
Has that traditionally been the case?
It has been the case since I've been there.
Was it true of this storm just now?
It was true of this most recent storm. And to follow on what Mr. Hutchins said, and if the town needs to be compensated for the payment, we, we understand that there's a, an issue between the town and the developer. They may, you know, bill the developer. We're taxpayers of the town. We'd appreciate it. I know my wife is stuck at home when the road isn't plowed, and she's there for days. You know, she can be there for two or three days where she can't get out, because the road's not plowed. I mean, her vehicle won't allow her to get out. We have mine, so I can get out if I need to. But, we ask that the town do what they can to assist the residents of our street.
Has there been days, literally, two, three, four days from a storm till the time your street got plowed? Two days, you're saying?
Two days.
Two days. Generally, it's about two days.
Yeah, which is obviously dangerous. Okay.
And, you know, when, when we had some of the storms last winter, there was two days of snow, and she drives a minivan. You're not getting out of that road in a minivan.
Right. Yeah. We've been fortunate so far.
Plug in a electric vehicle.
So, can you just come to the podium, because people at home?
Okay. If anyone else would like to speak, if you can just speak at the podium, because I know we're gonna get lots of complaints from people at home who'd love to hear what you're saying, they just can't.
I just want to add a couple other things. I don't know if I say my name again. Michael Hutchins, 28 Bissonnet.
Thank you.
Some of the issues are brought, and I forgot to mention this, in, in the concerns of the residents. It is kind of a professional neighborhood. It is an upscale neighborhood. I don't know if you've driven through there. And, including myself, there's a bunch of us that travel a lot, so we worry when, in the, every winter time comes, whether or not our spouses or the, well, I don't have any kids at home, thank God, but we wonder, you know, everybody worries if their spouses or the kids are gonna be able to get out of the street and not be stuck there. Really, it's just, it's more of a safety concern with a lot of the residents. For me, it's, I mean, I got four-wheel drive. I'll get through whatever, but, but we just really would love the town's help in enforcing something to help us out. I mean, whether we pass, the, the order conditions is passed over in May, or, I'm sorry, in April, and it's voted in May that the street gets taken over. Either way it goes, for the last five years, we've been paying taxes to the town with very little, I'll say, what's the word, maintenance that has to be done by the town. For the most part, we take care of our home street. We have a small budget, and I know we keep our minimum budget down to keep the HOA fees down, because we have very little to do. It's just some basin cleanouts. We've been paying for the street to be in sweep. That's been coming out of our pocket, even though technically, it should have been coming out of the developers, as far as I'm concerned, since he owns the street. But, we've been taking care of a lot of those things. It's just, it's just getting to the point that if we have to work around some liability issues so that we can plow ourselves, there's no way we can afford it. It would bankrupt the HOA, and it would raise the rates through the roof, and nobody's gonna want to live in that neighborhood. So, thank you.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
I mean, it's not just you, just in general. I mean, we could, we can listen to five, 10 more people, but I, I think we're all on the same page here, so rather than make people go up and talk and say the same thing.
I can give you a synopsis of everything.
Right. I mean, I, I think we're, we're all pretty much on the same page. I mean, personally, I think we've got a responsibility to keep the road clean and plowed, especially since we've done it before, and go after the developer. And all the things you've stated, you know, make a whole lot of sense. I wouldn't, you know, my kids are older, but I know what you mean. So, yeah, I mean, again, we can hear 10 more people say the same thing, but I, I mean, I think it is what it is, and we need to go on that forward. That's my opinion.
I agree with you. I mean, as a taxpayer, and I'm sure everyone here will agree with me, we really feel that if you are gonna plow, that you should be going after the developer, recoup the cost. I mean, it's, I don't want to see our budget, you know, go further into a deficit issue or whatever it might be, whether it's the Highway Department or the whole town. If the developer's got, you know, property and part of, you know, part of that order of conditions is he's gotta finish and do whatever, bill him. I don't care. Put a, put a lien on the property.
Obviously, it takes a lot of money, a lot of time, so.
That I don't know.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a budget issue, obviously, going forward with the Highway Department. We have to deal with, but it's not, it's, it's part of your problem in the end, you know, because it all comes out of one budget, but I mean, I don't think we need to, to do individual issues here.
I, I can't speak for all of us, but I know, as far as I'm concerned, your road needs to be plowed. And I think that, at that November 17th meeting where we talked about postponing, that conversation was because there are some things that need to be worked out in regards to Randall's budget and in what gets plowed and when it gets plowed. But, as, as far as I'm concerned, past practice has been to plow those roads, and whatever roads those are, need to continue to be plowed. If something changes with new developments in the future, then that's new development in the future. But, at this point, I don't anticipate your road not being plowed again. Now, as far as when it gets plowed, I don't know Randall's, you know, I don't know when his plow guys go out, or what roads they do first, or anything like that. I live on Pleasant Street, and I didn't get plowed till the day after this last storm also. So, as far as the order of things, I don't know. But, as far as continuing to be plowed, it is my anticipation that you will continue to be plowed for the rest of this year and every year.
Right. In, in the order of plowing, we don't want to relegate any street to a second, second best, so we'll ask Randall to put it right into the plow rotation. I mean, if he's next door, obviously, that's, that's right there. So, we'll work with Randall on that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're thinking, because we do see the, I mean, when I come home from work or I come during the day, whatever, the plow goes right around our, or right by our street and continues on and goes down the other side streets, but then just leaves us hanging. Now, whether that was a, a design or just the way it was, for the last couple years, it kind of made it, make us feel, made us feel like second-class citizens, you know? Your street's not that important. We kind of felt it was important. That's why a lot of us moved out of other towns to Southampton, for the reason that Southampton was a desirable town. And we want to make sure that stays that way, so that we get more residents in here, more developments, and build the town up.
And I don't think we want to give the impression that it's Randall's fault for not doing it.
No, I don't think so either. No, I'm not.
Okay. So, we just need to work with them and, yeah.
No, I, and that's why I said I understand his develop, or his, where his point of view is. And I know it's not him, but I think it was just the way the practice was. Maybe it was the predecessors. I don't know, but that's.
We need to get it solved.
We want to get it, we want to get it solved before it goes any further. Luckily, this has been a good year so far, very little snow, so.
I think we have about seven days at least of good weather.
Of no worse, no.
Ashon?
I'm Charlie Kineke. I live on 146 Valley Road, and I'm the liaison from the Select Man to the Highway Department. First, I'm gonna try to do this real simple, because it seems to be a lot of miscommunication here. The Board of Selectmen never voted to discontinue plowing of any streets in the town of Southampton. Bissonnet Circle was one discussed, but all those streets, there was never a formal vote to discontinue plowing. So, put that aside, okay? That's never happened. The second thing I found out was, during changes shifts, when the guys were plowing, Operator A didn't tell Operator B that he didn't do Bissonnet. That's where the delay was. You see those delays? Call dispatch, let them know there's a problem. They'll get out there. As for the rest of this, and the owners of the road and all that, that's a work in progress. It's gonna take some time to get that resolved. But I can tell you right now, there's never been a vote to not plow these streets. So, as of this winter, there should be no change as of last winter, other than I hope there's less snow.
We all hope so.
But I have no authority in that regards. But, but does that answer everyone's questions?
It does. And you're right. Some of it was rumors or hearsay.
It was like the telephone tree, and it just kept getting.
Yes, it was, and.
It was like, wait a minute, whoa, whoa, nobody's, you know?
Yeah, and that's partly why we're here.
That's part of why we're here. And I appreciate that. And I'm trying to answer your questions straight on.
And we came here with a possible solution as opposed to just giving you our problems as well.
And I appreciate that, too. But at this point in time, there's an issue between the Planning Board and the developer. And that has to work its way out.
I just, I just wanted to ask, whose, whose job is it to oversee the, the plowing and make sure it's done, you know, and it's complete?
It's the Highway Superintendent's job.
And that's who?
Randall Kemp.
Okay.
But, before you leave. The town has over 100 miles of streets.
Right.
Things get missed. Even my own road, I'm not on what is considered.
He's the only guy, right? He's?
He's the guy in charge.
Guy in charge, right. But he's the only one in a supervisory capacity?
Right. He's the department head level. Could you just give your name and address?
Yeah. Sean Fitzgerald, 38 Bissonnet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, Michael Hutchins, 28 Bissonnet. Yeah, we agree with everything you're saying, and maybe some of this has been on, I'll put some of this on me. I was the one that being the hound, making, sending the emails, questioning everything, going back to August, when we took over the HOA, because I was looking for some answers. And up through, up until recently, there were some emails, emails going back and forth, and one of them I got was, that was forwarded to me, was basically saying that, and I'll summarize it, was, you know, that Bissonnet Circle was, had not been approved, approved city for the, or approved street for the town, so any plowing that we got was a courtesy, and, you know, basically, be happy with that. And that's kind of what start, probably started to snowball this. But, you know, it, it, it's a problem in the past. We're hoping to get by it, and that we just came here looking for your help.
It's gonna be 50 and raining, so.
Oh, he will.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Is there any?
Anybody else for open time for the public not associated with Bissonnet Circle? If not, we're gonna move back to the beginning of the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd love to stay, but I haven't eaten yet. I gotta go eat.
Us either.
I haven't either.
Enjoy it.
Nice talking to you. Bye-bye.
We have Select Board updates and liaison reports. Anybody?
Uh, boy, you caught me there. Uh, well, we're gonna do Police Chief later, right?
Yep.
And, uh.
Remember, hold on a second, Charlie. They're not coming here at home until it's cleared up.
Nothing like clearing a room.
Go ahead. I have nothing. Nothing.
I just, well, I, the Greenway Negotiating Committee met. Obviously, it was an executive session, so I can't really say much, but we met and we're going forward.
Okay. Town Clerk? This looks a little more normal.
Hi. Hi. Good evening.
Hi.
Okay. There's a few people left here, right?
Nothing to do with you.
I'm sorry?
Nothing to do with you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, we've been very busy in the Town Clerk's office. We mailed out the census forms this week, also known as the annual street listing. The information should be updated, signed, and returned to our office as soon as possible. Having the most current information on file in our office is important, especially with all of the upcoming elections. I'd like to remind folks out there that failure to respond to the town census could result in being removed from the active voting list. So, if anyone is new to town, recently moved, or for whatever reason, hasn't received their census in the mail by early next week, to just notify us.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Do you automatically get removed from the voter registration list as for a certain period of time if you don't respond?
There is a, um, the state requires that if you don't respond, you can go to an inactive list, and after a certain period of time, then you get removed.
So, it's an automatic process?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. So, this is an election year, starting with the presidential primary on March 1st. So, we've included an insert along with the census with valuable election information, and I hope it will be helpful and informative. As you know, we have a special town meeting scheduled for January 26th. So, the last day to register to vote for this meeting will be Saturday, January 16th. The Clerk's office will be open from 8:00 to noon that day, and being a Saturday, I have to check with the Police Chief, and he's allowed me to pre, to do this before, so that from noon, for the, from noon to 8:00 PM on Saturday, if anyone is eligible to sign up to vote, they can go over to the police station.
So, you'll be coming from 8:00 to 12:00 here, and then they can register from 12:00 to 8:00 at the police station?
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah. So, I'll have a sign on the outside door and a message on my voicemail. On another note, all department and committee representatives and town employees should have received an email or information pertaining to the state ethic requirements. There are two components. The first is the online training, which needs to be completed every two years. And then the second part is an acknowledgement of the receipt for the state ethics summary, which needs to be signed every year. I've requested that it be included on all Boards and Committees' agenda, their next agendas. Spreadsheets are in the mailboxes in the break room, and they track everyone's, I have everything on a database, and, so I can track everyone's completion dates and who needs the online training and who hasn't done it, and so I can keep track of that. So, both receipts and, both the receipts and the certificates of completion have to be filed in the Clerk's office.
Is there a deadline?
I'm, I would love to see everyone do it by the end of January. They're supposed to do it as soon as possible, but it, you know, if I could set a deadline, the end of January, that would be really helpful.
So, if anybody on this Board hasn't done it, could you do it by the end of next week?
Could we send you the confirmation electronically through your email?
Yes. Yeah. I, I have encouraged people to do that electronically, just to try to save paper, save trees. Yes. Yeah. I, I have encouraged people to do that electronically, just to try to save paper, save trees. Let's see. So lastly, I'm in the process of preparing our own, for our own town election and caucus. So anyone whose term is going to expire this May will be receiving a letter indicating that. And nomination papers will be available in our office soon. And also.
Is that the caucus?
Yeah, the caucus is March 15th. Mm-hmm.
And the election?
It's, the annual town election is May 2nd, and the town meeting is May 17th. So if I can be of any assistance to, you know, for any of these topics, please let me know. And so there's a lot going on, and we're gearing up for a very busy and exciting year.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Jennifer Peliquin, the Director. We've been very busy at the SEAWAY. Starting on Monday, we're offering a new class. It's called Silver Aerobics and Strength Training. We're trying to get people more active with things. We already have thirteen people signed up, which is really good. We also have Two Healthy Bones and Balance classes a week, and yoga. And we have a treadmill and recumbent stepper for people to use. Our van service has increased by twenty-six percent for the time period of July 2014 to November 2014 compared to July of 2015 to November of 2015. We provide an average of one hundred and eighty-six one-way rides per month. FRTA increased our budget to twenty-five thousand five hundred for FY 2016, and we hope that they will continue to fund it at that level or higher for FY 17. It has been brought up in the past that some of our accounts are in the negative. I know that that's been a topic at the Select Board meetings. That's because we have some problems with the timing of when the monies are received. The State Formula Grant money is generally not received until late fall, early winter. This year, it is even later, because we haven't even received it yet. The FRTA account is always in the negative due to the town paying the drivers' wages and other expenses, and then sending a bill at the end of the month to the FRTA for reimbursement. So by the time the town receives the check from FRTA, they've basically incurred another month's worth of expenses. So it's always going to be showing in the negative. And the Highland Valley Grant is paid monthly after we submit a bill, so again, it's a month behind. Seniors use the automatic doors very often, and we are very, very grateful that they were installed. It's a huge help for people, because they've always had trouble with how heavy the doors are. So that, that was a great thing that was done. One problem we do have is that we understand the upper parking lot is for all to use, but we have activities every day for our seniors, and it's hard for them to park in the lower lot or in the field behind the fire station sometimes. Many have trouble walking long distances or up the stairs. We have received many complaints from seniors about this, especially on Thursdays. So we are hoping maybe that the younger adults wouldn't mind using the lower lot to help our seniors who have difficulties.
Who parks up on that lot? I mean, on Thursdays, for instance?
So this is actually kind of humorous, and this is why. Because when we used to park in the lower lot, we were too close to the door for those who are, needed the quicker entrance but didn't want to park in the upper lot. So now we park at the very back end of the back of the upper lot, and now. I, I think the employees, we're more than willing to do whatever we need to do. We're not going to park down the police station and walk over. But, you know, if, if the Board has any suggestions on this, I understand Jen's point, but it's just humorous on my end, because we feel like we're trying to help, and it appears we're actually harming rather than helping. So if there's any suggestions on how we can figure out this conundrum, please let me know.
Is the parking lot often filled up, period?
Well, it, it just depends on the day. I mean, there's some days where there's like two cars in the entire whole top and bottom parking lot. But a lot of times, it's full. We have tax bills. We have other people come in just to drop things off. We have a decent number of employees, and, you know, mostly, I think there's about three or four of us who park up top, and everyone else parks down below. But then we have problems, like Mr. Ferrari will come, and he likes to park down there, and.
No, he parks up at the top.
Oh, does he park up there now?
So he can walk in through the senior center on the level.
But we've had other people who park down below, because it's easier to get in. And I know Janine's even asked that sometimes if we can have parking spots reserved for the elderly on the lower lot. So this is just humorous to me. I, I don't have the solution, but it's funny.
Is Thursday the?
The busiest in the morning, yeah.
So in the morning. So would it be unreasonable to ask that town employees park down at the fire station?
Well, that's cool, too.
On Thursday?
Yeah.
There's no.
In the middle of the day, that's awful.
Well, maybe someday we'll have more.
I guess the best we can ask is to the back of both lots.
To the back of them. Do you have your executive session signs on the door? Oh, could you take those off? Yeah, do we just take those? Thanks. So I guess we'll just do our best.
Okay. Well, if people could just park like at the, the end of it, yeah. So that would help, because, you know, our people are older. They have trouble walking. They have canes. Some have walkers.
That's like Charlie and I.
I'd be parking up top if you really want me to park down below.
Well, you're a senior citizen, so you can get away with it.
Just park at the end.
Okay.
That's it.
They'll be out in the pasture out there parked.
Thank you so much.
And by the way, your wages are right, and expenses are right where they should be, so it's.
Thank you.
Community Preservation. You're a busy lady lately.
Yeah. I'm Virginia A. Hart, 27 Fulmer Road, and I am the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Had you met on Tuesday, this would have had on it draft, and it would not have been complete. But yesterday, we completed this. And I have more of these than anyone else would like. There will be a few of them out in the, in the hall, and there is one in the Town Clerk's office. I would like to call your attention, this is full of all sorts of things, from the state, our own plan, how we operate, and other, everything. But I'd like you to look, first of all, at page six. And at the bottom, it says total. Over the years since we have been involved in community preservation, the state has given us one million six hundred, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. This is what the state grant has provided for this town.
Is, is the percentage on the right the matching percentage?
Yes.
So that's very good.
If you notice, at the beginning, we were getting one hundred percent. And then a couple of things happened. The slowdown in the economy. The money that we receive comes through a fee on every deed transaction. Two things happened. The slowdown came, people weren't buying homes. They were staying put or weren't moving up to larger homes. And more cities and towns have joined. One of the things that Southampton did was come into community preservation at the full, the largest amount possible for the surcharge on our own taxes at three percent. So we're in the rounds of giving until the very end. Some only get in the first round. One of our neighbors, Amherst, decided that they'd change to three percent, because they were tired of being, I think they were in the second at one and a half percent.
But on this, if I'm looking at it right, here, we're doing three times as much from the state, which means if that's eighty-two percent roughly, there's another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars that we get from our three percent. So we get three hundred to three fifty a year?
This year, it would, well, if you take a look at October 13, you see, that's a hundred percent, and that's the same amount that we would have put in. The five, the one hundred and fifty-one thousand forty is eighty-one percent, so we gave a hundred. It's still a good return.
Very good.
I mean, where else do you get an interest rate of eighty-one cents on a dollar? Okay. The next page is right along to number seven, is the sheet that shows how we can use our funds and what we can use them for. And sometimes it's kind of hard. We had one this year come to us, and we had to say, you know, it just doesn't, we just can't do it. It was kind of interesting, because I checked and was told I shouldn't do it with the Community Preservation Coalition, where we get our, our support and information. And neighboring town is doing the very same thing. But unless somebody in their town says, "Hold it," it's, probably will happen, without any question. A court case just came down from Norwood, where they wanted to use it for sidewalks that would connect recreational and historical sites. And the court said no. It's, but they did make some changes. Page eight shows you the things that were presented last year. And if it says it's on hold, we have not brought that to a town meeting for a good reason. In most cases, it's because we've not received three estimates. And we will be, and seeing as they're all under the Conservation Commission, we will be asking for them to either follow through or withdraw their projects. The new projects are on page nine and 10. And you notice that some of them were submitted and have already been approved. And had a question about the handrails out here. What's happening, Charlie?
Basically, Heather was putting together the specs for them. And given the fact that the weather has gotten so cold, it's not a priority at this point in time, because of the fact that installing them would be impractical, because we're going to have to drill holes in the concrete and put an epoxy mix into there, and it will not set up and adhere properly with the cold temperatures. Yes, it's going to be done. We missed this winter. We understand that. But that's the reason it hasn't moved forward.
Okay, because I'm getting questions on that.
It hasn't been lost in the system. It's just the reality is it got too cold to actually do it practically. So Heather's got some other priorities, like the HVAC with the library and stuff like that. So I basically suggested her just put it on the side for a little bit.
Okay. I'm, it's, people are asking.
Oh, it's needed. There's no argument in my mind. It's just, it's one of those winter projects that you can't do in winter.
I can give them that explanation. And I don't know about the others. The first ones were approved so that they could work on them prior to the spring. And we have one more that is not on this sheet, that will, that will be coming up at the special town meeting, which if it is approved, should be done early next spring. And just, it's the pavilion roof. And in, in 2012, changes were made that allows for a little more flexibility of using funds for upgrading recreational activities and places for activities. And the pavilion roof is leaking, and they would like to get that done before the concerts begin over there. So we're going to be bringing that one on the 26th. So that's kind of where we're at, and we then have our goals for this coming year. Pretty much the same as last, except number four. We really would like to make sure townspeople know what community preservation is about, and what has been done with the funds. And also, if they have a project, and our project sheet is the last part of this, that we would really like to get more variety. And if anyone has any ideas of property that we could help the Housing Authority, that part, that one-third of our reserve funds, it's ten percent. Housing is one of the priorities, affordable housing. The Housing Authority has worked on it very diligently, and they've been unable to really figure out how to do that. So they have quite a bit of funds sitting there. The other thing with housing, if any of you, and unfortunately, the Council on Aging people have left, but there are funds, community preservation funds, that were set aside for the use by the alminers for accommodations in homes of senior citizens whose medical costs have put them in a point where they can't make the accommodations to their own home so they can stay there. And that has been used a couple times. And I do know the first time it was used, a man stayed in his home for his last six weeks.
See, I didn't know you could use funds for that, so that's something to get out there and let people know.
Can it, can funds be used to mow?
For what?
For mowing?
No. No. And it can't be used for the nearest school roof if it starts leaking again, or this roof.
Okay, don't be jinxing us.
I just checked. Quickly, do you want to land this on our desk?
No, we, the question that came up that we had to say no to was tree planting. And one of our neighboring towns is planting trees. But unless somebody takes them to court and says, "Should you be doing this?" That's the, the one thing. The state does request every year that we tell them how we spend the money. But they do not monitor unless there's a question. Are there any other questions?
Virginia, the housing situation?
Yeah.
And this is totally just off the cuff. You might want to have the Housing Authority contact the Town Treasurer to see what properties are being taken for taxes for not payment of taxes, because those are usually depressed properties in lower-income areas of the town. And it might be that they can secure one of those properties and revitalize it for low-income housing.
Could be a thought. I will pass that along. Thank you. Any other?
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Personnel policies and procedures.
God, look at the blue shirt and everything.
Good evening. Art Lawrence, 113 Crooked Led Road, and I'm also Chairman of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board. With your permission, I'd like to publicly recognize and publicly thank the members of the Board, starting with Joanne Alderman, Janet Kane, who is our Finance Committee Liaison, Chairwoman Liz Molten, who's our, of course, our, our Select Board Liaison, and Jim Palermo. I'm so blessed to have such, so many smart people and such dedicated members of the Board. Let me start with some statistics. This is for calendar year 2015. This is for calendar year 2015. We reviewed and looked at very carefully, a hundred and seven personal change forms. We looked at fourteen personal request forms, not only new jobs, but also replacement jobs. We scored four positions. And scoring, we use the, the Management Association criteria and we come up with a grade. And of course, with, with, once we have a grade, we can determine a salary for the individual. We had one grievance. And on advice from Town Council, we didn't go forward with the grievance. I personally am not, was not happy with that. I made that decision. In retrospect, I will not make that decision ever again because I think that grievance should have come before the board and we should have listened to it because it wasn't a town employee. Enough said about that, but in, in the future, we will not listen to Town Council on, on a grievance. We handle a lot of requests, as you can see by the, by the numbers here. We've had many special and emergency meetings. Liz knows and everybody else on the board to try to accommodate department heads and boards and commissions. For the last two months, we have been meeting twice a month instead of the usual once a month, and that will continue in the future. We meet on Thursday before your meetings here on Tuesday so that the Finance Committee meets on Tuesday, the Select Board meets on Tuesday, so we have a nice flow of, of the information moving, moving forward so we can get these sign-offs done. It's been an interesting year and a challenging year. At the beginning of the year, we, we definitely had some issues with elected boards and, and the commission. I, I think part of the problem was they weren't really not aware of some of the bylaws and some of the rules and regulations that, that we have to abide by. And I think it's very important to, to realize that, especially being, being a town, we have to be very transparent, especially in hiring practices. And I think some of that information didn't get through to the elected boards and, and the commission. On the other hand, I think the, the last three or four months, it's worked quite well. We've had very good cooperation from these elected boards and, and the commission. I, I'd like to thank them for coming to our meetings, for the dialogue, for the discussions, and for the emails. So I think a lot of those issues have been worked out and I think they understand what we're trying to do and we, we're trying to facilitate and try to do it as quick as we We're very proud of our, our new personal bylaw rules and regulations, which we have submitted to, to the Select Board for your review. After your review, it will go to Town Council for, for their review. And then, once all the changes and additions and such have been incorporated in the document, we will have a public meeting for all in-town employees and town citizens and it will be presented to, to them. After that, again, once everything is resolved, we will submit that for final signature to the, to the board. We feel very strong about the rules and, the new rules and regulations. We feel they are fair to the town. They're fair to the employees, that they satisfy current legal mandates. And they clear up a, a lot of confusion, confusion. Seeing that, I've been told there's at least six different copies of the, of the current rules and regulations floating around this town. And it seems like every day, somebody brings up another one with another confusing part. So hopefully, we can get all that, that resolved. We've tried to make it easier to hire from within, to use internal candidates, which was not in the, which is not in the current rules and regulations. We've, we've tried to make vacation time fair for all the various hours people work in this town. It's a crazy town. We have people working from forty down to twenty hours and everything in between. So we've come up with a way that it, it, it will be fair to, to everybody depending on the number of hours worked each week. And we also have introduced, or will introduce, hopefully, a sick time bank that employees can, can bank their, their, their time over, you know, over the years and hopefully use that for catastrophic illnesses. Our next assignment is going to be fun, I think. And, and I know the board is kind of really looking forward to it. And that's to interview all town employees and then writing clear job descriptions using the same template or format. So everybody will be reviewed. We'll have a, a very complete job description put together. And then the goal is to hand it off to an independent or outside agency. And thanks to Heather, I believe we have a grant to cover the cost of that, to determine a, a salary range for all, of course, we have to score the, the, the job descriptions first, and then we hand it off to this outside agency. And we will come up with, with, or they will come up with a salary classification. Obviously, it will require Select Board approval, and I believe it will require approval at the, at a town meeting. Hopefully, we can get this done before May. It's aggressive. We're starting in this building. This will be the first building we'll do, all the, all the employees here. And then we'll spread out into the hinterlands and catch everybody else. I think that's all I have and I thank you for your time. Any questions?
No. But just, I guess, a thought. You said that you think the process is going smoother, sticking to the policies now in the last several months?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of it was just confused, you know, not knowing, you know, our, our restraints, our, the bylaw restraints. And, and yeah, I think it's going very, very well. And, and like I say, I, I thank the boards and, and the commission for, for all their assistance. And, and they've been coming to meetings and, and assisting us and telling us what, you know, really what's on the paper. A lot of times, it's, sometimes, well, many times, it can be confusing.
So it sounds like the communication has improved. But, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you much.
Thank you so much. Town Administrator?
This is what happens when I have too many roles. So just, I'm going to be very, very brief, Liz, so you're going to...
Do you have to do it from there? Can you come to the front?
Well, I can't take notes anti...
I'll take notes.
But, but you're not on my computer.
She's on the camera.
No, she's not. Oh, right there.
Now I am, though. Sort of, see?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. So just some really brief updates. We had a department head meeting today. I actually think it went very well. We are working on team building as a group and I think it was a very good communicative meeting and I think a lot of people are on the same page and I think that's a great thing. The budget process is now fully underway. We actually met today and discussed all the different forms involved, due dates. We've sent those out a few times. Anyone listening, listening at home who has not looked at the forms, they are available on the common drive in Town Hall or on our Dropbox account if you are a department head who is outside the building. We are also, in addition to the budget process right now, finishing up the special town meeting warrant that will be discussed tonight by the board. We are finishing up the permitting guide that we've been working on for quite a while. It's annual town report season. Those are due January twenty-eighth. We'll remind the boards, committees, and commissions of that next Wednesday when we have the monthly meeting. We are also working on budgeting within the office, doing a few different purchasing items at the moment. And I'm still working on correspondence that is due by the end of November, what month are we in? End of February for an appeal, so. That's mostly what I'm doing, meetings, budgeting, and annual town report and more meetings.
Any questions?
Oh, one last thing. Safe routes to school is now moving forward. So we are also setting up meetings to meet with the Butters.
Okay. We're going to check in with the town accountant. Vicky, light your glasses. They're the same. That's my son.
Oh.
So I am assuming that everybody got the latest budget reports from Joyce. One piece to this is, I know Donna is still posting revenues from December because she was awfully busy with getting all the tax bills and all the water bills. And since we switched systems for the water and any issues we had with the tax bills, we, you know, that kind of took precedent over receiving all of the revenues for December. This also doesn't include, because it's, she ran it as of December thirty-first, the, the most recent bill warrant that you have that you're going to sign tonight. I guess it's pretty status quo. You know, if you look down the page, you'll notice that Larrabee building expenses is negative at the moment. I had posted the first quarter for trash. At the same time, Joyce was posting the last bill warrant, so she saw that it wasn't negative and I was doing it at the same time. So this should be hopefully rectified when we, you know, if the articles at the special town meeting pass. And then, the general fund is pretty straightforward. You know, there is a little bit of a lag in vocational tuition from Smith Vocational, but that always catches up. And I have not yet posted the December local aid assessments yet. I'm working on that, say, tomorrow, but I mean Monday. And if you notice, you go through some of these, the school funds, some of these are negative, like the school lunch, we're waiting for state aid, we're waiting for some of those receipts to be posted. It's, any of the grant monies, we always get a transfer from Hampshire Regional, which when I, this got sent out, Bobby's working on getting those transfers monies to us, which they have to wait before they get reimbursed from the state for those, before they can send them to us. As Jen Peliquin alluded to earlier, you're going to see Council on Aging and police details. You know, the Council on Aging pieces are always reimbursement, so they're always going to be a little bit behind, those types of issues. And then there is just some, you know, cleanup stuff, something might have got posted to the wrong account when I was putting the budgets in because there's obviously a lot of numbers here. But other than that, everything seems to be going pretty well. I don't know if you guys had any questions?
Is there anything that we're not seeing that we should be concerned about at this point?
Um, no, I think the things that I spoke of last time in terms of some of the police wages and some of the building maintenance, those are going to be, you know, hopefully taken care of at the town meeting. And those are still those same concerns because nothing has really changed. So, you know, in the town meeting warrant, you'll notice that those are going to be hopefully rectified at that point.
John?
No. The reports are very helpful every time I get them. I monitor them, so if I have any questions, I'd ask.
And if you don't get them, please send me an email if you don't have the right email address because sometimes if Joyce doesn't have the right email, because she had it from previous and it kicks back or whatnot, we don't necessarily have an Outlook address book, you know, that you can just click on it. So, you know, let me know and we'll, we will get those to you.
Karen?
No. When I have questions, I just go directly to Vicky and just sort of take care of it.
Which is what is expected, I guess, so.
That's faster than waiting here.
Yeah, and, you know, if you get these and you have a question and you obviously know this and you have something that doesn't look right, call me up, we'll look it up, we'll talk about it, whatever.
Yeah, of course, good.
You know, some things might be ninety percent spent at this point in time, but they probably should be because they're all contract stuff. So, you know, that kind of stuff can come up. And the auditors are coming on February eighth. I already have a list of Premier Lake Mary information to try and send them, so they will be coming February eighth.
What's the discussion of indirect costs for enterprise ones? Heather?
We were going to just talk about briefly, Vicky, where you are with using the Hadley method versus the Southampton method and the comparisons you've come up with thus far because we do need to get moving with the indirect cost calculations.
Well, first off, I would preface by saying I wouldn't wait for the indirect cost calculations in order to go through with your entire budget. Those pieces should be, not that we shouldn't use them, obviously, because we should, but they shouldn't be like, oh, well, I'm not going to do the budget piece because I don't have these yet. We should go through the whole rest of the process. And if you have an extra ten grand, well, then you can always give that to somebody later. But I originally, I went through preliminary and I went through Hadley's calculation and I went through our calculation. And I guess you can't take Hadley's just as it is and use it because it doesn't fit into our format of how we run our town in terms of water. You know, they, they take a percentage of town administrator, the accountant, and the treasurer's office as a percentage of total salaries. So it's the same percentage for each individual office. But each individual office doesn't do the same amount of work for the water department. So...
Does it?
Yes. Yes. It's a straight, you know, whatever, this comes out to be two-point-eight-two percent. So, you know, all of us don't do the same amount of work for the water department as the other. Like Donna's office does way more work for that water department since they have the bills there now. They're going to be sending them all out. We should charge the water more for her office than for mine, or even for Heather's or whoever else might be in this mix. The, and so, and then with the transfer station, it doesn't include, which we could, you know, you kind of maybe have to mirror these two together. We don't, it doesn't account for any highway superintendent for the transfer station because they don't have a transfer station. You know, they have workers, they have a water department and a sewer department, and they have however many employees and a superintendent or DPW guy for the whole thing. So that's not included in their piece either. The other piece would be, like, the expense piece. They have, you know, the expenses for the accountant, the treasurer, and they also have legal bills and insurance. The insurance piece, I think, is, is okay. We do include that in our calculation. But as far as the legal goes, I mean, I understand that the town retains copayment and page for the entire town. But the use of copayment and page by water is really not a whole lot. So to say that you're going to take the same percentage of water as you do for everyone else's expenses really doesn't kind of fit into the, to the mold. If water was to use copayment and page, we would charge that directly to the water Then the other piece would be, which is a good piece to have because we didn't have it previously because we weren't accounting for it, was OPEB costs, which comes out to only between the two, water and transfer station, like, maybe a thousand dollars. So it's not a whole lot of money, but we do need to include it because we were never putting money aside for OPEB before. So we should include that piece, you know, in our calculation. One of the other things that Hadley's doesn't do that ours does is, we, I take a percentage of all of the insurances, the money for insurances as a percentage of the total salaries, excluding the school. I don't include the school in that piece because that gets put into their indirect costs by itself. It doesn't, so what, Hadley's doesn't do account for those highway workers that work for water and for the transfer station, their fringe benefit pieces. So if you have, you know, Roger and Dave working at the water department, or whoever works at the water department, you know, twenty hours a week, there's no place, there's no mechanism in Hadley's to charge water for their fringe benefits, their insurances, their health insurance, their retirement and all that, where ours takes into account that. So I think, you know, there is definitely some tweaking we can do with ours in terms of adding the OPEB piece, maybe looking at the highway building usage, which there's only an estimate in there and it's kind of been that same for a while. And we can, I can speak with Randall and maybe we feel that there should be more money spent by the water for the use of their bay that they have there, you know, those types of things. So in essence, I, when I went through this, you know, I did it exactly how, you know, I put the numbers in how Hadley had it, and it's twenty thousand dollars less than ours, somewhere around there. Transfer station is pretty close without having Randall in Hadley's piece. So, you know, I guess it's up to the water commissioners to decide if they feel this is fair and equitable because it's ultimately their decision if they feel that this is something that they... something that they, you know, whatever mechanism you come up with, whatever methodology, they need to agree to that methodology.
You said Hadley's is $20,000 less than ours?
Yeah.
I'm going to do it both ways.
What are the numbers? What is Hadley's numbers, what's our number?
Well, preliminary going through this, Hadley's is $45,746.25, and ours is...
Sixty-something.
$67,300 and some odd dollars. So, you know, like I said, that doesn't take into account, you know, it takes 3% of Donna's salary time. Well, personally, I think it should be more, because they do all the billing and all that kind of stuff. So you mean, like, those pieces are what, you know, you can work. And so I think if you take parts of Hadley's and incorporate them to what we already have, you know, like I said, the OPEB piece and, and part of the town administrator, and then you kind of have a good mix of the two.
Just question, memory-wise, I'm not sure. So if we say $65,000 for a number, and we charge it to the water department, is that going to be $65,000 of pure additional revenue that we would get, or are we co-mingling something they're already paying?
No, that would be just, you know, this year they paid, was it 50, is it 57, I think? What did we charge them for indirect costs this year? No, it wouldn't be on top of any, you know, like, they, it was 52,379, so this year would be 65.
Okay, so it would gain the difference.
Yeah, because of the way that the insurances work and the way that, you know, the schools, people didn't take as much insurance, so the bulk of it would belong to the town in, within the budget.
Just want to make sure people didn't see a $65,000 number out there, when in reality it's a much smaller number.
Correct. And the other piece too, and I have to go back and double check, but I believe what we should be doing is, at the end of the year, we need to calculate the actual and take back whatever monies they don't use, because it's based on the budgeted salary numbers. So, for instance, water has $50,000 set aside for highway guys to work there. Well, if those highway guys only use 30, we really charged them for 50, and they didn't really use the 50. So I have to go back and just double check my enterprise fund manual, and I believe that we have to, we should be doing that going forward, so.
Could we do it the opposite and charge them an additional amount if they use more than 50,000?
We should be, yes, but they, I guess, they haven't done that, they haven't used up all their salaries in the past, whatever, three or, three or four years, so.
But, Vicky, just to be clear, what you're saying there is the money we put aside from their budget to take from, that's not part of the money we transfer out initially...
Yes.
...as an indirect cost?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's the correct understanding?
Say that again, say that again.
So, because remember, we've had conversations past week or so on this, but I just want to be clear, so what you're saying with that $50,000, it's not, it has nothing to do with the indirect cost, because we talked about we can't charge the water department ahead of time for the guys used Randall's...
Right, I'm, what I'm saying is if we put $50,000 in for a budget and they only use 40, I would have allocated $50,000 worth of fringe benefits to the water department, when really only use $40,000, they should only get charged $40,000 worth of benefits, because that's all the salary that got charged there.
But it has nothing to do with the indirect cost piece, other than the fringe benefit...
Correct.
...charge?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's all based on budgets, and then when you go to do the actuals, then you should, you know, ultimately...
How do we do with this information?
We have to...
So, the, this is going to become relevant as we move forward with actually looking at the revenue. It doesn't hold up the budget process, we move forward the budget process, but by the time we're getting to the end of sitting down with departments and looking at budgets, we're going to need to know how much money we have in the bank. So this piece simply goes to contributing to what's in or what's not in the bank.
But like I said, ultimately, you know, I would put this together, write up the methodology, talk it over with the board, commissioners of the water department, and yea, nay, is it reasonable, is it acceptable? And the other piece is too, is the department of revenue needs to find that it's equitable. And so if you were to all of a sudden say, hmm, we're going to rejig this, and now we have $150,000, they're going to go, whoa, timeout, like, how did that happen, and we don't think that that's fair.
Is it reasonable to change the format that we've done this for this budget season, or is this something...
Yeah, no, this budget season, yes, that, yes, that is reasonable, exactly.
Any other questions? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was important. Trying to get you to talk. Randy? Do you need...
Can I just...
Oh, sure. Come on up.
Janine Domina, town clerk. Okay, after listening to the PPP board, or with the PPP board, and the employee's manual, I just want to address the Board of Selectmen, that as town clerk, I have requested a copy of this manual, and other employees in the town hall have also requested it, and we have been denied. It is a public record, it has been mentioned at public meetings, and it's, it's very important that, that we do not keep being, that we are not denied access to this document.
So let me just ask this question. If this is a work in progress, it's something that they've put together, it's all draft form, nothing is approved, nothing is final, nobody has to follow those rules, right? Isn't that the same as saying that this special town meeting warrant that gets changed every day is a draft every day? We don't release it as a draft to the public until we come to this point and we do it?
If it is requested, you write draft. We mentioned it, it was addressed this morning at the department head meeting.
And do you remember what the response was, Janine?
Was that...
The response was, we would get it to you, but unfortunately, we have other things like special town meeting and budget that are kind of the biggest piece. We will get it out, but just to address Liz's point, and she's right, when we're doing the special town meeting warrant, until such time that the special town meeting warrant goes before a public body, it is not a public record. So just, just keep that in mind, that those are two different things.
I disagree with that.
But I...
Draft copies are public records.
But only when they go before a public body, otherwise it's just notes.
But because it has been mentioned at public meetings.
I, I think we're talking about two different things, Janine. I'm talking about the special town meeting warrant on the personal policy thing, as we've already clarified this morning, so I'm kind of confused why this is coming up again. I already let you know, Charlie seconded what I said, we will get it to everyone. But the caution I didn't mention to folks is, the, the one thing I'd be very upset about is when people see this first draft, draft, draft version, and then they start arguing at a public meeting that something's changed from the draft, draft, draft version, and we say, yeah, because it's going to change. Nothing in that draft version has any, any relevance or bearing on what the final's going to be. So if people really find it adamant that they have to have a copy, I have no objections to having a copy, I just have the concern that we're going to be spending so much time going over what's not relevant, because it doesn't exist when we get to the actual public meeting. When the Board of Selectmen looks at, if the board looks at half of it and says, this is all crap, we're deleting half this document, or saying, let's add half this document, I don't like the idea of wasting people's time. So if people want to take it home as an individual, not as a town official, because it's not a town official, you know, personnel rules piece and read 200 pages, by all means, that's their personal choice and they have every right to do so. However, just remember that when we get to the meeting and everyone's saying, well, what about number three? Well, what about page six? Well, what about line 12? They don't exist. So just make sure that, you know, if people want to invest their time on it, fantastic, no problem, knock yourself out, but it has no bearing in the end, and it could change complete, the whole document could be deleted. So just want to let people know, as I said in the department head meeting this morning, we're happy to provide it, but please keep in mind that you very well may be wasting a good portion of your time reading through it, because it has no bearing on what the end result is.
Well, I think what the concern is also, when people, it's been, what, three, four, five weeks that people have been requesting this, and they have been denied. I understand what you're saying, but there's, there's a concern. It is a public document, it's been, once it's mentioned in a public meeting, it is a public document. Also, the order that things are going to be, the public meeting is going to be an after fact, you know? I think the, the people that it's going to be affecting would like their input before the final, before the select board, before their final decision on that.
Well, also, I mean, the public records law, mass public records law is, is pretty clear, and I understand Heather's concerns, but our concern is that somebody won't construe it properly, or, or wasting time reading it, it doesn't come under the public records law. It's up to them if they want to read it or construe it the way they want, but I think we have to provide it under the mass public records law.
It was my understanding it was going to be provided to you. The meeting we had this morning, you were told that it was going to be provided to you. Do you mean, just to talk? I mean, it's Thursday night, you're not going to see it till Monday anyways.
I hope, I, I wanted to bring it to your attention, and it is something that's been...
I understand, we talked about this.
Yeah.
And I've brought this forward a number of times, and, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And I'd say if you don't get it in the next few days, let one of us know.
Okay.
I'm sure Heather will get it to you, though.
God's sake, you'll probably see me, because you'll have a chair problem or something.
Okay, I really appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Randall?
Yes?
You're an hour and 20 minutes late for your...
I didn't know where you were.
Find this moment, just kidding, I'm just kidding. You're up.
Please leave the weapon in the back of the room.
That's, that's not funny.
This, are we going to talk about that box?
I wasn't going to, but...
Is that from 150 Pleasant today?
Eighty.
One foot on the left.
I'm well. Randall Kemp, highway superintendent.
All right, let's talk about the letter to the Mass, Department of Transportation regarding the East Street project.
Okay. East Street's been languishing for a while. Charlie and I have been talking about how we can speed it up, he's approached...
Senator Hummerston had a conversation with the senator about this, he's talked to DOT. We've all come to the conclusion that the best way to, to spirit this project forward is to have the selectmen send a letter to DOT, asking them for an update and explaining that it's been several years since anybody's actually moved forward with this. That letter should be a catalyst for our legislative side of the state to start talking to DOT about this. So basically, what we're doing is just opening the door so everybody can start communicating again.
We want to send a letter. Have a meeting for another week.
Yeah, and the letter's already been drafted, I think it's awaiting the signature of the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
The, the project engineer from VHB is also trying to arrange a meeting in Boston for him and I to attend with the DOT project manager, to see what, what we can do to urge the project on.
It's two issues, basically, it's the roadway and the bridge. And part of the issue is the fact that we've now established a new playing field and everything on Strong Road, and now we have more transportation with the people on bicycles and that developing in town, so if we don't start moving this project, we're going to end up with a bottleneck there.
I don't have any problems with the letter.
Well, if you do, I drafted it.
You can make a motion if you'd like.
I moved it to...
Oh, perfect, well, you're welcome to the podium, Mr. Floyd. Just going to ask you to read the letter. Oh, you want me to read the letter and do the rest?
No, I, thank you. Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. Three questions on the project. About five years ago, whenever it was, there was a hearing in this room. Was it determined that the bridge will be part of the project, will be added to the project, because originally the bridge was not?
I'm going to defer to Randall.
Okay, second question, there is going to be sidewalks from the center of town, College Highway, both sides going to the bridge. And is that going to be the standard four-foot concrete sidewalk, or what DCR recommended could happen, it could be sort of a cinder pathway going around the big trees on East Street? And the third and last question is, it was determined that there would be a sidewalk from the bridge all the way down East Street to County Road on one side, which side is it?
That's a long sidewalk.
Two and a half miles.
For you?
Okay, one.
Question one, and this may answer the other two questions, my understanding is that the bridge was not included in the project, and that's one of the reasons it's been held up for so long, because you would essentially have a roadway with a sidewalk that went to the bridge, and then where do you go? You walk across this narrow bridgeway, that's not safe for pedestrian access. That's part of this letter, we're going to try and get the bridge included into the And questions two and three?
What side of the street from the bridge to County Road?
Well, it hasn't been designed...
Yeah, I don't, Robert, I don't think, or, I'm supposed to address you, Chairman Moulton, it, I, I don't think it's useful to talk about which side it's on right now, because the plans are currently at 25%. A lot can change in the rest of the process.
The conversations I've been having with the legislators has been the fact that we recognize the bridge and the roadway has to be done, and it may be that the roadway from College Highway, including the bridge, is done in one phase, and then the second phase is to go to County Road. Don't know, this is all preliminary, the whole idea of the letter is to get it from point A to point B. Right now, it's just sitting there.
Is there a motion to accept and send this letter?
You wrote the letter, you want to make the motion?
I move that we send the letter to the proper authorities relative to the bridge and East Street, and move this forward.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I sign this one?
Yes, please.
Let's talk about, Randall, you want to come back up and talk about Tom?
Were you watching earlier?
No.
I threw you under the bus.
I don't have TV, honestly.
So we're going to talk about Charlie.
I didn't know what to say.
I didn't know anything. So, we promised to have a discussion on following Tom move. On the last meeting, we decided in regards to this matter that John and Charlie would speak to you and work with you to handle what's happening. Where are we at with that, where was that conversation?
Randall and I went for a nice drive in the country, looked at the different roads and stuff. I don't think, John, you've had the opportunity to see these roads. At this point in time, what I would suggest is we table this till March. There was some information that I've been gleaming in the last couple of days, I just sent you an email with some stuff, it's late this afternoon, and we need to, John included, sort of talk this out privately and get some ideas of where we're going, but it looks like quite the quagmire. Because there's the issue of the fact that there are private roads, but there's the issue of public safety. And then there's the issue of everything from, and I shouldn't say it this way, because people are going to misunderstand what I say, but there's everything from Betterment taxes to the fact of property owners having a right to town services. So it's, it's not an easy one, two, three at all.
So can I just ask this question? Obviously, I think people need to have their roads plowed. I understand your issue, I understand the liability to the town, I get it, but why if someone decides to build a road? Okay, they buy the land, they want to build the road, they build all these houses, why do we let people move into the houses without everything being settled, without the road being accepted, without knowing that it's going to be, the road's not going to buckle or whatever? Why do we do that?
I can't answer that question.
Wouldn't it make more sense to say, you know what, sure, you want to build a house, you want to build this road, then go ahead, but you can't issue building permits or occupancy permits until we know that the road's been accepted? Wouldn't that stop some of this?
Well, this is not new.
Well, I know it's not new, but I'm saying, couldn't we move in a different direction here, so that we don't have this conversation over at least plowing? I mean, you're going to let 50 people move into a new development, but then we're going to say, oh, well, by the way, the developers got a problem with the development of this, and we're not going to plow it. It just seems to me it would make more sense to say, before you let people move in, let's make sure there's no problem.
I mean, I think we should bring Tom Quinlan in and talk about it, that's his first thought.
Or Planning Board, maybe?
And the Planning Board.
It just seems to me it would make more sense to say, before you let people move in, let's make sure there's no problem.
I mean, I think we should bring Tom Quinlan in and talk about it. That's his first thought.
Or Planning Board, maybe?
And the Planning Board. But secondly, I'm sure the builders are going to say, we can't afford to do all the road and everything before we sell a few houses. There's our profit. So I think there's going to be two sides of this. But I don't disagree, because right now, we're, we've got Bissonnet, and we've got a builder who's not living up to the responsibility.
So.
I think we should put that on a near agenda.
With the planning board. I'm sorry, what was that? I want to talk to the Planning Board, Building Inspector.
And the Building Inspector about this.
Get on their agenda.
On our agenda, a future agenda, not too far in the future, though. I think I said near agenda, which maybe didn't make sense, but.
So in the meantime, I guess we need to decide, are we going to continue plowing what's been plowed in past practice and make sure that we're all clear about that?
I move that we continue what we're doing.
Whatever's been plowed in the past needs to continue to be plowed for the remainder of this year.
I'll second it for discussion. Are there private roads now that we haven't been plowing, that people want us to plow?
Yes.
Okay, so those are not in this.
Whatever's been plowed in the past.
If we have a history.
Needs to be plowed.
Okay. Will that take care of most of them, just some of them? How many private roads are there out there? And how many have we established a policy of plowing? Percentage-wise.
How many? There are two new ones that I can think about right now, and one, I've been asked about two more roads. And I said we were going to have this discussion and.
Were they plowed last year?
No. Not these two new ones. Should I mention them?
Sure.
Okay. Old Harvest Way is a new sub-development that's going in. There is a dead end off Gilbert Road that I've been asked about.
Who are you being asked about, by the builders or by people?
By a resident.
Who's already living there.
Yes. And there is a new, another new subdivision going in off Pleasant Street. I mean.
There's no houses on that one yet, right?
Um, I don't. Yeah, not yet, but I mean, there will be surely.
So it sounds like we need to have this meeting sooner than later to talk about what we can do.
This is my concern, is I plow whatever you want me to plow, but at a certain point, it's going to get to the point where I need more staff, more equipment. If people are going to expect me to get them done in the timely manner.
How long, I mean, Old Harvest Way just had houses built on it this year, right? Did they have houses on it last year?
Last winter, they... I can't answer that for certain. I know, I don't think there was a resident living there. The houses were in process. No.
And what about the dead end on Gilbert?
We've never plowed it.
We've never plowed it.
Because it's a dead end, it would be very, I mean, that's why it's not a town road. It's not, it doesn't have a cul-de-sac, proper cul-de-sac, and it's going to be a pain in the butt. Because what do you do, back up the street? There's nowhere to turn around. I don't, I don't want to be plowing roads like that. It's a way, it's, I don't see a waste of my time, but it's very time.
If it was plowed last year, I think we can continue to plow it this year.
That's easy enough for me to follow.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
To figure out what to get, what to do going forward.
So I think that was the motion in second, so we'll take a vote.
So there's a motion in second to continue to plow anything that has been plowed in the past. Nothing new at this point. All of those in favor?
Aye. I think we also need to come up with a policy slash procedure to hold the builders responsible sooner in the project than later in the project, because now we've got a road that.
Great, like, how about when the road's accepted, then the town starts to plow it going forward? But that's a Planning Board issue, right?
That's, that's how it's supposed to be done, but we end up with what we've got, residents saying that they're paying taxes and they deserve to have their road plowed.
But do we get ahead of that curve and say, houses can't be sold until the road is finished and accepted? And that would make the builder.
Well, here's the thing. If you want to sell the house and let people live on it, then go ahead. But until it's accepted, then it's the responsibility of the developer to plow it.
But we just had a group in earlier tonight from Bissonnet with that same issue, and they're saying, we're paying our taxes, it's not between us and the builders, it's between the town and the builder. You go.
So we fix the problem before.
I've.
Between the town and the builder before it gets to that point.
Right, but once people buy a house on it, we owe them something for their taxes. And we're kind of in a quagmire. And the builder can walk away from this road, this particular road and say, hey, sue me. So this should be a process upfront. Before they start making money off these houses, we should have something from them saying it's accepted.
Liz. This afternoon, late this afternoon, I sent you and you an email. That's a guidance document from MMA.
Yep.
You might want to review that before we get into this any further.
Okay.
I got some information, I've had some information sent to me as well that I can pass along to you guys.
Yeah, we need to sit down and talk this out. This is.
I've tried to be preemptive. The newest subdivision that's going in off Pleasant, I sent comment to the Planning Board and to the developer. And one of the contingencies I put in is that every resident should be informed when they're sold the lot that the road is not a public road until accepted by the town. It's another kind of trying to spoon-feed information out there, but at least it's out there, is my hope. Thank you very much for your clarification.
Do you update him on the Bissonnet? That's in the motion.
We just made a motion to plow anything that's been plowed before.
Okay, but Bissonnet was discussed earlier, and that should be.
You're welcome to speak, Chief, just come on up.
Does he live on Bissonnet?
No.
I'm not going to mention it, but the only concern I would have is public safety. If we need to get down there, ambulance and whatnot, throw in a wrench. But, I mean, we do have to look at that.
Didn't I just say that?
Yeah, but I'm just, you know, I just want to say that, you know, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be addressed and assessable, at least for emergency personnel to get in there.
I think that's why taking care of the problem upfront will work.
I don't want to complicate it further, but people have long driveways and shared driveways. We do not have the resources to plow everybody out.
All right, all right. If it's a driveway, no.
Just a point to know, that's all.
Okay.
I'm going to call for open time and call it one more time, but you all look like you've been here since the beginning, so.
Hey, Liz, I'm taking a five minute. So don't, don't vote without me.
Okay.
Was it something you said?
Well, we can't do anything without you anyway, so there's no point in having a conversation. So we're going to recess for five minutes, we're going to adjourn at seven. Re-adjourn at seven forty-five, I'm sorry.
Pass the meeting, wait.
It is seven forty-six. So we will call the meeting back to order. I know, George, one minute over. Sorry. We're gonna have a discussion about the fire chief applications. The interviews are scheduled for January.
Liz, they're police chief on fire.
Police chief. Sorry.
You scared somebody.
Interviews are scheduled for January nineteenth. That's a Tuesday. Charlie has an update.
Okay, we've been meeting with the Police Chiefs Association, went over the applicants. They are presently drafting us the questions to be asked at the interview. The way the interview is being set up is the Board of Selectmen are gonna conduct the interview. It will be open to the public, so the public will be able to see what's going on here and so on and so forth. We haven't finalized if it's going to be one individual at a time, or if it's gonna be jointly. And basically, one gets asked one question, one gets asked the second question, so on and so forth. But nineteenth will be the final interviews, and we'll go from there.
How does the Board wish to proceed? Would you like to see the two candidates in a debate-style interview? Or would you prefer to see them interviewed one at a time like we've done in past practice?
Let me ask a question. When you say "one at a time," "one at a time in the room," I guess my only concern is that the first one up will get the questions, and then the second person may know the questions before they get asked, give them some extra time.
So I guess my, I mean, it's an open meeting. You can't ask anybody to leave the room. They have the right to be here. My opinion is that if you know the other person, the respectful thing to do would be just to leave the room. I can't ask anybody to do that. I can't tell anybody to do that. I guess I'm hopeful that the two candidates would have that discussion among themselves and agree that that would be the best way to move forward. I don't think having a debate is a good choice.
What about having both candidates in the room and alternate questions between the two? You know, ask one candidate the question, gives a response to the second candidate, then gives a response, then you go to the second candidate for the first.
I feel like that's a debate.
See, to me, that's not, excuse me, a debate.
Because you're gonna have, then someone's gonna answer, and then they're gonna want, your immediate reaction is to rebut what they just said.
Well, they're not answering the question in regard to what the first person just said. They're answering, we're gonna ask them a question, "How would you do such and such?" It's not gonna be, "This candidate doesn't do it right. Here's how I would do it." It's just they're gonna answer the question of how they would do something.
I mean, we've had lots of interviews, Highway Department, Fire Department, and we've never had them all sit in the room at the same time and do that. I don't know why we would differ from that now. I think you go to an interview anywhere, and chances are, somebody's in there in front of you. You just don't walk in the door until they're done.
Heather can clarify this more, but Town Council was, they both have a right to sit in on the interview at the same time, as does the public. We can ask question A to one and question B to the other and go in that format. We can ask them to leave the room, but they don't have to leave the room. And the other thing we need to do is decide if we're gonna have some kind of quasi-drawing as to who's gonna go first. Basically, put two names in a hat, and they pull them out, and one goes first, one goes second. But we gotta be as impartial as we can be with this. Trust me, I'm trying to keep it simple, and every time I try to keep it simple, it gets more complicated.
I mean, if you have an acting chief now, wouldn't you interview the candidates who aren't acting first? And then, in any job?
No, not necessarily. I think you flip a coin and be fair, you know?
I don't know. I guess in my own head, the two candidates could just say to each other, "Listen, I'm gonna go at this time. Could you come an hour later?" It seems, that seems like the most respectful way to handle it to me, but...
I'm not saying that's not true, but in your head versus what practicality will, you know, I'm not sure how that will work. I mean, if it wasn't in the public, we could say, "Yeah, you're coming at ten."
Well, here's the deal. We can either decide, A, let them have a debate, or B, we're gonna interview them both on the same night at different times, and you leave it up to them.
See, I wouldn't say it's a debate, because I don't think we want a debate. I don't think we want one going back and forth with the other. One gets questions, another gets questions, and there's not a interaction there. It's looking at the Select Board and answering our questions rather than...
In all due respect and practicality, it's gonna be very hard to have somebody answer and not have something come out of their mouth that is a rebuttal.
But we can take that into consideration during the interview process, that if a person can't do that, then that may stem from other issues that we have to consider. I mean, this is a professional position, and I think both professional people, and if they can't do it, then...
I would prefer to interview one at a time, the way we have for every other major department head.
Okay, so Charlie, you're the decisive vote here.
Unfortunately, we don't have the decision to be able to say we're gonna interview one at a time. I'd rather we just do both at the same time, ask one one question, ask the other one a second question, and go from there.
Can I just ask a question of yours? You're saying, "Ask one one question and ask another one a second question," which will cut, excuse me, the questions in half. I think there's a lot of questions that we'd like to ask both of them the same question.
Well, we're developing about a dozen questions. Out of that dozen, we're gonna probably utilize eight. So it's gonna be eight questions. If we have a full Board of Selectmen, you know, then it'd be like, you know, less than two apiece.
Yeah, so that's, again, it's such an important position. I think we should spend the time to get all the questions out there.
I'm welcome to hear any comments. You just need to come to the podium.
Vicky Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road. If I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, when we did the first round of interviews for the town administrator, when we had the mayor from Methuen and the other guy, weren't they all, three of them sitting right here? And we all, isn't that how we did that?
Yes, they were. There was multiple in the audience, yes.
They were all, they were in the audience, but we did not ask multiple questions. Somebody sat at that podium.
But they were all in the room at the same time, right.
They were all in the room, and that's what I'm saying. One person gets asked all of the questions. If the other person chooses to sit in the room, then they choose to sit in the room.
But I remember they were all in the same, they were all in the room.
My own opinion is they would get up and leave out of respect for the other one.
But they were, but they were all in the room together, if I remember correctly, yeah.
Or they were able to be.
But they didn't know, they didn't know each other either, and we didn't know them. And so you wouldn't know them from a hole in the wall.
No, I'm just saying that they were, that they were in the same room. I thought they were all...
It's a public meeting. Everybody can be in the same room.
Anyway, you're welcome to speak. You just need to come to the podium.
Line 'em up.
Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. Just a point of clarification. I heard Charlie, I thought Charlie said, "We have to ask them the same question." And then I thought, I heard Charlie said, "Ask them one question and ask the second candidate another question."
If we're gonna do it one-on-one, then we ask them the same questions, but the other individual is not in the room. If we're gonna do it as a debate style, then we're basically asking one question on one, another question on the other, so that there isn't this process of having an opportunity to listen to what the response is and do one better.
Okay, then the gray area to the concept of having them both in the room and asking them the same question is the concern that the person getting, the second person getting the same question will debate, will counter what the first person said.
Right. You said that it's a black horse with white hooves, and I'm gonna say no. It's a white horse with black hooves.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Thank you. I like what John said, make it clear. Then whoever deviates from that, you take that into consideration.
Again, we're talking about two professionals, so I don't think there're gonna be an issue there.
No, no.
George just yells in the back. Couple of suggestions. John Fitzpatrick, seventeen Miller Ave. First one is, if you've got twelve questions and you're gonna cull it down to eight, maybe two of those eight, you give both of them beforehand, and they prepare something. So you see that aspect of it. I've had time to prepare. Here's what I say. And the other one is, it'd be more time, but maybe if you had individual interviews, I don't know if by the rules you can, but if you were to speak, if individual members were to interview, I'm not saying together where you had a quorum, I'm saying one-on-one, and then that would salt your knowledge of the candidate without it having to be at the show.
We tried the approach of the town administrator and one selectman doing the interviews, and that got shot down by council, because it still appeared to be some kind of a meeting. And trust me, I've tried everything I can think of to try to make this, because I know both of these individuals. I respect both of these individuals. I don't wanna put both these individuals in an awkward situation.
Right.
It's just...
Trying to get a job is an awkward situation.
I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, let's see how people handle it, you know? And again, they're both professional, and I don't think either of them will have a problem with it.
It's an open meeting.
Personally, I'm gonna keep it professional, meaning that I have no problem leaving the room. One-on-one person with the Board at a time, I think that would be the best way. We work together. We got a great working relationship, friendship, and I think that it would be, in my opinion, I'd like to just be out of the room while he answers the questions, and then it's up to him if he'd like to do the same. But that's what I would do.
Thank you.
So now it's a foregone conclusion that you're gonna be the second interviewee.
All I'm saying is that I will, I will leave the room, and I think it's a much more professional way to do it when we have, you know, we know each other and work together.
You know, this may just end up being that the two of them come in, and we say, "Would one of yous leave the room, and the other one be interviewed first?" And then we just do it.
Yeah, bring them both in. But again, if one says no, then so be it. If they both agree, then...
We just had one that said he would leave the room.
But I guess my only issue with that is give one person all the questions, then another person has.
You're welcome to speak. Please come to the podium.
Why Not, Barbara Laflambe, twenty Cook Road. Why not put twenty of your very best questions in a hat and alternate? They pick one of the questions and answered it, next candidate picks another one and answers it. I think that's a super idea, and they get to see and...
That's assuming we have twenty great questions, Barbara.
Well, I mean, you're experienced. And there's all kinds of questions that you can ask.
Oh, yeah, that is a way.
What does the Board wish to do?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Aheart, come on up.
I have seen and read about a lot of interviews. I have never seen one at this level, where both people are in the room. Usually, they are given an appointment time, maybe not even the same days, if you're looking for a superintendent of schools or something. I've interviewed candidates for teaching. They didn't know who the other candidates were. I can't imagine putting the two of them in a room and giving them random kind of questions.
You are right about the time. We've always had, this one is at six, this one is at seven. If someone comes early and they end up in the back of the room, then so be it. The case here is that we're in the same town, and so they're gonna know what time the other appointment is. With all due respect...
And the part you were talking about, not knowing the names, that's the pre-interview. We can do that, but we've got two internal candidates, that's it.
But I really, I really feel you interview one, you interview the other, and you use the same questions.
But we don't have the authority to isolate them.
No, you don't.
No, no. Sometimes we've, I've been in interviews where two people who are working together, one of them's going to get a new position. But I really can't imagine any other way. That's just from my background.
May I ask Heather?
No? All right, last one.
I agree with Virginia. She gave me a good idea. One other way, I'm not saying it's a great way, is you have one person being interviewed, and you have somebody in the other room who's doing a written test for a certain amount of time, and then they switch.
Thank you. How does the Board wish to proceed?
I mean, let's try to combine something. How about if we ask them both to be here at a certain time, and then we say, "Out of professional courtesy, would you both agree that one would leave the room, while the other one is getting the questions?" And if they both agree, fine. If they don't, then we go back and forth questions.
I second that.
That is a motion.
I just wanna make sure we're very clear.
You want your second for discussion?
Oh, that's where we're at at this point.
Okay.
So you're, you wanna, you wanna set interview times, one person at one time?
No. They're both coming in, say, seven o'clock on the nineteenth, and at that point, and we can ask them beforehand, tell them what we're gonna do, saying, you know, if they would want to step out of the room while the other person is getting interviewed with the questions, as a professional courtesy, if they both agree, then they can do that, and that would settle the issue. If they, one says, "No, I wanna stay here. I wanna be available," then we can alternate questions or give them different questions, be prepared for both scenarios.
Okay, so that's the motion. There's a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay. Let's move on.
Liz, I just wanna take this opportunity to let you know it's eight o'clock, and the video recording will only go until nine, so just keep that in mind.
So we're gonna, can I skip to the annual town meeting? Meeting warrant?
I think you have a few people who've been here for a little while on the Cook County Road. Maybe we can do that. I think they expect it to be relatively quick, so...
Okay, I will take the people here to talk about Cookin County Road. There's a property on Cookin County Road that's owned by the Gwinner family. There's interest by the Conservation and the CPC and Water Department to preserve this land as protected land around the aquifer. Heather's been meeting with representatives from Southampton and East Hampton to discuss this potential project over the past few months. I believe we have a few folks here to talk about the project, and we're happy to hear from you. Just come to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Wamsley. I'm the Land Conservation Manager from Kestrel Land Trust. Just for those of you who don't know Kestrel, we are, again, a land trust that was founded in nineteen seventy. We cover eighteen towns in the heart of the Pioneer Valley. Our primary foci are actually large-scale forest conservation and farmland preservation, but we also step in to assist towns or to help towns in our area who identify a land conservation goal and need outside technical assistance, which is how we've been brought in on this project. We had heard from various people that this property had been identified by both East Hampton and Southampton as being a high natural resource value for drinking water protection. We also, and this is probably the most important thing, learned that the family was interested in exploring land conservation options for the property. So we came in, we were particularly asked by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Winding River Land Conservancy, who had been trying to kind of solve the riddle of how to protect this property for a while, and it is quite complex. So we decided to take that on at their request. And we learned over time that it is certainly a challenge, but the good news to report is we have come up with what we think are several potentially viable options for protecting the property. We are going to vet those very soon with both towns and with the family. We're meeting with Barbara Laflambe next Tuesday, actually. It's going to be a challenge. It's going to be, if it works, a choreographed dance. I think that's the way I'm looking at it, with several steps that we're gonna have to go through. We're gonna have to time it right, but it could indeed work. And the funding, we believe, can really primarily come from CPA funds from both East Hampton and Southampton, and one or more state grants, which we've identified. So again, we're looking forward to moving the process forward as fast as we can. We know it's been taking a while, and the family has been very patient, and we certainly appreciate that. But I just wanted to give you that update, so that the project should be switching gears soon, and a lot of meetings will be happening, and hopefully we can figure out which of the options we've identified would work for everybody involved. And again, kind of move it forward and get it where it has to be on this particular warrants and get it in the processes that need to be done.
Okay. How do we move forward from here? What do you need from us?
We're probably gonna eventually need your support, particularly going before the CPA and for grant applications. Again, once we identify which particular option makes most sense for everyone.
How much money are we talking about from CPA funds?
Well, the initial discussions that we have had was ideally, the project itself, the property, is assessed at one million fifty thousand dollars. The thought was, if we could come close to trying to split it up, a third, a third, a third, between the towns and state money, we're aiming for that. We're gonna try and see how close we can get. And those conversations are gonna be forthcoming.
So, three hundred?
So three fifty, three thirty?
Something, yeah. I mean, the problem has been getting Southampton's contribution up. If we had learned that Southampton would like to hold the fee, the ownership of the property, with East Hampton holding the CR, there are some permutations of that we can certainly explore. But the CR, in my recent discussion with the appraiser, actually comes out to between nine hundred thirty-five and nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. The after-value on the land would only be a hundred to a hundred fifteen, potentially. So we need to kind of try and get Southampton's contribution up in a way that meets all the goals from all the grant funders and all the laws related to CPA. But again, we think we've come up with several ways that we can explore doing that, particularly about how we time the protect, the land preservation project.
What does CPC think about the funding, and is there enough money to do that? What happens, I mean, I'm looking at those numbers that you gave us, so if that's the number that we need, then what happens to the other projects that are on the table? I don't mean to put anybody in the spot, but before I put my support behind something, I need to know what happens to the rest of the town.
I'm not sure I can speak for everyone on the committee. There has been great interest in saving this. One of the reasons that you really need to understand is that the aquifer is under this. It's the one that supplies East Hampton, and it's the, we are buying water from East Hampton to meet our needs at certain peak times. Some of our taxpayers are already getting their water from East Hampton. I think it's important to have pure, clean water, and that is one of the big issues. Now, if you look at Vicky's latest report, other than the fact that we are not spending huge amounts right now on anything, part of that is waiting for the greenway. We still have money that is not being used from, I don't know how the thing is gonna break out, but we have money that's sitting there in our undesignated account.
So it doesn't put all the other projects or things on hold?
It does absolutely nothing to any of the other projects.
Okay.
It wouldn't even keep, because, you know, like if the Housing Authority found something, they've got money enough to buy it. And we certainly have money to cover any of the projects that are out there, and even with being a little careful on hoping the greenway is going to come to fruition.
Now, a question. I mean, there's money, there's projects out there, the old firehouse, if we get a new complex, the old town hall, that's...
Well, we can do something on the old town hall. The only thing we can do on the fire hall is if it is a center section with the school. I'm not too sure that the Historical Commission... I'm not too sure that the Historical Commission is even going on with that.
Yeah, they haven't said anything yet. Of course, we don't know where the complex is going. But I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of possible projects out there, including Greenway will add even more if it goes there.
And there is money out there for historical preservation, too. So, you know, grants and things that we could, people could apply for and get matching from us. But right now, I think we're pretty well set to fund this without big problems. Depending on what they, if they say buy the whole thing, it's going to be a little bit more tricky.
Yeah, a question for Mark, if I may.
Okay, ahead. Yeah, I was, I wanted to hear from the Conservation Commission, too.
The, oh, it's great.
Oh, it's okay, you go first.
You're up.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the, the value of a million dollars, is that based on it being buildable land?
Yes, exactly. It's very built, last frontage on two sides.
Even over the aquifer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a lot. I think there are 10 remaining house lots which are available.
And how many acres total is this?
25.
25, okay, thanks.
I just wanted to know if the Conservation Commission had anything to add?
Nothing new.
Okay.
Other than you're not going to grow any more aquifers with clean water.
Okay.
Once it's filled on, that's it.
Again, Mark Wamsley from Kestrel Land Trust. Part of the problem so far and kind of part of the complication, it's kind of like I stepped into an advanced SAT problem with this property. I mean, it's really quite complex. But besides the complexity, again, just making the numbers work, I think the CPA for both towns probably will be less of an issue. The big wild card is obviously going to be getting a big state grant. We're going to need a rather sizable one, I think, to make this work. Probably either the state land grant or the drinking water protection grant. So that we'll have to kind of cross our fingers on and do a good job of putting together an application to try and make it all work. So when I say we're optimistic that we have viable options out there, there's still a degree of chance that it might not work. But again, we're choosing to be optimistic, so.
Now, in the land grant, from what I understand, there's a lot of money out there, but there's a lot more projects that want that money, so it's not a given by any means if we apply for. Is that accurate?
Yeah, no, absolutely. We might have a slightly better shot at drinking water. But over time, we have identified three grants that we could apply for. There's also the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, the stateside grant, which comes up actually in February. It's the least amount, but you can apply for it and find out whether you get it before the land grant application comes up deadline. So we could even go down the line and see what we could get.
Can we get multiple grants and decrease the cost of East Hampton and Southampton?
I'll have to look into that. I think there may be some conflicts there, but certainly if we can come up with anything we can, we'll try.
How does the board wish to proceed?
I don't think we need to do anything. It's just informative, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So if any members of the board are interested in attending along with myself, Virginia Ahart, Marla Hank, Barbara Laflamme, and who knows if I'm missing anyone from Southampton at this hour. The next meeting is over at East Hampton, City Hall. I don't even know what floor, but it's at, in the afternoon, if you're interested. It's, I think it's like the 13th or the 14th. 14th at 1:00 P.M.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the approval of the special town meeting warrant.
Awesome. So if, if it's okay with the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to take a couple of these articles out of order because there's a few people in the audience waiting to see how some of these go. The first I was going to do was the, John Fitzpatrick, just, because that one should be the very quick.
Can you give me a page number?
I most certainly can as soon as I open it, unless John already has one.
Page four, off the page.
So what this article is, is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of 30K to the elementary school line item. Said sum shall be taken from vocational tuition. John?
Thank you. We, we did not vote as a committee on the use of these funds, should we receive them? Because we vote on the use of funds after we receive them. We voted to request that, that on our article be placed on the warrant. When we, when we spoke at, at the annual town meeting, we talked, we asked for, we had an amendment that moved, I think it was $45,000 from vocational tuition over to the Norris budget. And that was our conservative number at the time. It seems it was even more conservative than it needed to be at the time, but that's, you know, we went with the numbers, you go with the numbers, right? In looking at the, at the, at the notes on page three, it looks like, is that, you say approximately 55,000 and there's 30 in the warrant. We're at 100% net school spending. So I guess my first question is, is could we get closer to the 55,000 than the 30? Because at 100% net school spending, this is just keeping that number whole.
Where do you see 50?
I see 55 on page...
53,834. So John, I did meet with Craig Jurgensen, Eliza and Bobby on, I don't know what day this week, probably Monday morning. We discussed this piece. We also talked about how, from the town's end, we like to be conservative when we're making sure that there's some money left for the vocational tuition in the box. The reason we like to do that is because we don't know what's going to happen between now and June. We could have an influx of everyone in the town's relatives moving in with their high school student who wants to go to Smith. People could transfer.
Did that happen last year?
It hasn't happened, but we know that, we know that this is very, you know, moving and the like. We, we understand that we want, I think, as a town, we'd like to keep the money in the school because what folks sometimes get confused with is the Smith Vocational School pot is part of the elementary school net school spending. So it all goes to that 100% net school spending. I did speak with Bobby and we're already good. We're over the 100% now.
Before this transfer?
I believe before. Vicky, any, did you see anything otherwise in that piece?
Are we, are we at or above net school spending currently without this transfer?
I want to say yes, because we were at 100% before we transferred the money already from the vocational school tuition back at the annual town meeting. So, and that being the case, the other thing, too, to keep in mind is when we did indirect costs this year, we actually under, my understanding, if I remember correct, is we stayed with the number, I think, was 765,000 and we didn't increase it for this year. We just kept the indirect cost number the same as last year to benefit the school a little bit more. So we're already at the 100% net school spending. Where we were kind of going in this process, after talking to Craig and Eliza, was the idea that, you know, we understand it's a contract year. We're having the same issues with the town government itself, with union and non-union employees. And everyone seems to be at the same coal of the 2%. So at least this $30,000 would cover half of your 2%. So it would cover 1% of the two. So it wouldn't kill you guys as much moving forward where you have to now go back and back pay people back to Ju, July 1st.
Right. Well, and my point I was making about that we didn't talk about how we would spend it is we did have 1% in the budget for the, you know, in the budget that we built and that was approved, anticipating that there would be some level. And, and, you know, we've been very conservative in our execution of the budget, right? So we're trying to find the dollars in the existing budget. That's my way of saying, I'm not sure that this is necessarily how we would use that money. I would hope that, that we would, over time, maybe even be able to move that money back to, back to school choice. We spent $180,000 in the budget, more than we wanted to as a bridge year, because we haven't seen increases in years, right? So we've been using more of that. So my real, and I don't argue with the number or, you know, if the intent, I guess I would, I guess I wouldn't be concerned if the intention was, if you're saying that if, if somebody doesn't move, whatever your scenario was, 10 people don't move into town and they all go to the Volk and they're, or they're already going to the Volk. If the intention was to move that later, probably not, right?
Well, you know, John, I know you understand from being on the Finance Committee for a period of time, but at some point, I mean, we, we don't, we're not as active as some communities in making sure we build free cash, because free cash is saying that we have a healthy budget and that, you know, we're not spending to the absolute dime that we possibly can come up with. But I think one of the things is, we don't know what's going to happen at the end of the year. We have budgets that are running very tight and sometimes we have to transfer funds over. And if we spend every last penny that we know is going to be there, potentially going to be there, we're going to put ourselves in jeopardy.
I get that. That's a better answer, though, than, in case somebody moves into town. So you just can't have it all, you know, by design, you know, the plan wasn't to give it to, right? I'm not here to argue for the, for the full 50. I'm not. Or the 50, full 55. All I did was ask what the, what the difference...
But a reasonable answer is...
What the difference was, right? I don't know if on the, if on the, if there's any time left on the handout, for what this is, in my mind, this is to maintain net school spending at, at current levels as opposed to, to paying, per se, and what it's for, right?
Where did the note come from? Because if the note, I mean, generally the note that's there, that's written, is something that's been discussed, but if you haven't voted on it...
And if that's the case and it came from the administration, then that's different than...
Is that where it came from?
Okay. All right. Well, right, how the, how the funds get spent is different than, correct?
But just, this is a, this is a very sensitive subject to me, for me. But just, just to let you know, the Finance Committee approved, recommended this article go forward, but based on the note that was there. I, I have an inkling that if the school committee was to come and say, well, we think we're going to put it somewhere else, so we're not going to use it towards this piece, that the Finance Committee very well may withdraw the recommendation at town meeting if the note changes. Just, just to give you a heads up and let you know, because I did get a, it did appear to be the, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong since you were present, but it did appear to be the opinion of the Finance Committee that when you have the notes, they lead to the intent of the article. And if you remove the note or modify the note, and the other concern from, that's been expressed to me in the past from the Finance Committee, is, you know, the school budget is one thing we don't have a lot of control over. We put one line item, we put the money there and, you know, you guys do have a budget, you guys do document everything and the like, but sometimes town residents at times feel removed from that and they don't always feel like they have as much control over where the money's being spent. And sometimes every now and then, I've heard that they may feel misled, that something's going someplace, but they don't know for sure it is, because, you know, it's like anything else. You get that telephone and hearsay and all that fun jazz.
Yeah. So this is a measure of control?
Well, I, I think it's just a measure of good, of good faith. I mean, if the school committee has something else they want to put there, that's fine, but I would make sure you guys communicate thoroughly with the Finance Committee and even me with them, because they're ultimately the ones that stand up at town meeting and say, we recommend this article or we don't.
If money, if money comes into a budget, right? Or, or the way that a budget gets funded, what you call $1 versus what you call the dollar next to it are two different things, right? You could call this dollar for this and this dollar for that.
But it looks like this was requested specifically to supplement something. So I think that's where she's going. Here's what we're requesting for, we need it, we don't have it funded, and then change it later to something else. Am I getting that right?
Yeah. I think, I think, I think the mist, to the extent that the committee made a mistake, and I'll say it's one, right? Is that, is that we said, let's ask for the money, for the excess to be just like we did at annual, but the, whatever was allocated to net school spending, let's, let's spend it on school, right? And what we should have done is said, let's write a warrant. So essentially what we did was we asked the superintendent to put a warrant on the, to request you to put the Board of Selectmen on a warrant without voting and saying, could you put this warrant? And if, and meeting monthly, that's probably, that's probably what we should have done. Okay. We meet the night before, so, and I assume we'll get some time at the meeting if there's questions about it to explain whatever it is that might need to be explained or questions that might need to be asked. I, I look at it and say, it feels like a, the question itself, the warrant itself is not written like it, but the explanation feels like a referendum on increases, right? And I see that you've got that other places in the budget, too. These are contractual increases. And I suppose, you know, we'd have to find ways whether or not, right? That's why I, I just, I just feel like the language around to maintain net school spending, because that's essentially what it is. You're saying it was, it was going to be spent over here, it's not going to be spent over here. So we spend it in the other school silo, so to speak.
Now, if you didn't get this passed, they would still get the 2% coal or you'd just draw it from somewhere else, right?
Yeah. Yeah. And like I said, 1% of it was already budgeted.
Right.
Thanks.
And John, just so you know, it's, it's honestly not meant as a referendum. It was just meant as an explanation from...
I never said it was meant as one. I, I, but it could be interpreted as one or it could be picked up as one, right?
Understood.
Not unlike, not unlike two and a half, you know, it brings out the nose. Who knows?
And like I said, if the school committee does wish to change it, I mean, that's the purview of the school committee, but I would communicate closely with FinCom on that one.
Sure. Okay. And, and, but you're approving this tonight.
I don't have any issues with it. Does anyone else on the board have any issues with it?
I have a question.
Sure.
We're approving the warrant, so at this point in time, we could strike the note.
But you may lose the recommendation of the Finance Committee. That's up to you. Either way, I mean, last year we said, should we move money from Smith Volk to the Norris School? And we did it. If, if they're going to use money from Smith Volk for the Norris School, then they use the money from Smith Volk for Norris School. And as, that's as simple as it is, whatever that note is. That might not be the opinion of the Finance Committee, but...
I'm trying to just keep it simplified. What I'm looking at is if we strike the note, school committee comes up at town meeting and says, this is what we want. Finance Committee says, well, that's what we voted on or what we didn't vote on, but at least there's no note sitting in front of everybody debating it. It's just, I'm just discussing this. I'm not making a motion to do this.
And I appreciate that, but I'd also ask, I mean, the warrant, the article is what you're approving, right? The notes around it and the marketing around it is part of the handout. And really, my question would be, how long do you have to? I'll, I'd be happy to go to Finance between now and then, depending on when these get
Mr. Floyd, I'm, you might want to take a front seat.
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street, Town Moderator. Heather, do we agree that the warrant, when it's posted, will not include the Finance Committee recommendation, the note, the sponsor will be clean and only the articles? And then in the motions, all that can be added on?
No. No. I have to have this printed by tomorrow, no.
No, for the...
No, when you post the...
The warrant's getting posted with Mike before I leave tonight, whatever the Board of Selectmen wants to do. We don't have wiggle room.
With the notes or without the notes?
We've done the past couple with the notes and with the Finance Committee recommendation if we had it.
But that's not part officially, that's not the warrant. The warrant is only the articles.
Absolutely.
And then if there's any explanation, that gets added to the motions that are passed out and read.
So you're suggesting two separate...
I'm suggested...
One says the articles, one says articles with notes that's handed out.
I'm suggesting one thing, that whatever is posted is clean, only the articles. Because that is what, as John said, that is what we're going to vote on. We're not going to be voting on the notes or anything like that. That's not really part of the article. An article was clean.
So can I just ask why we didn't do that in the past, then?
We had a transition and it got added in, but historically it was clean. It was only the articles. And that's what a warrant is. So to be safe and not to cause any legal problems or putting in the wrong note and, and an article is clean. We're warning the populace, this is what we're going to be voting on and this is the financial limit. When they arrive at a town meeting inside the building, they are handed something and those are the motions, which is worded so that it fits in the four corners of the article. And then all the notes and the add-ons and the extra handouts can be given.
And they can be printed and handed out.
And everything can be added on.
So I, I guess the Board of Selectmen at this point have to make a decision of whether they'd like me to continue taking notes for this meeting or whether they'd like me to go remove the notes from the warrant so that it can be posted tomorrow, because I'm already or whether they'd like me to go remove the notes from the warrant, so that it can be posted tomorrow, cause I'm already at like 13 hours today. I'm dead.
What time tomorrow does that be posted, right?
It, it just has to get to Mike tomorrow. The absolute deadline is Monday, I don't like waiting to the very last day, because then people argue whether it's 24 hours, whether, you know, you're only halfway through the day.
Monday, Monday is fine, but I, I'd like to hear, you know, like to wait for the last minute, cause we've had some actually going on on a Tuesday. Monday is fine, cause it's two weeks for a special.
I, I'm not around tomorrow, I can't.
How about your assistant, she's not work, she doesn't work tomorrow, right?
It's Friday.
John, tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday, I'm already at like 46 hours.
We're not open, the town hall's not open.
Okay, is he, is it in a word format?
It's in a, it's in a word format, but it's not, you know, I do text boxes, I, I do a very elaborate system so that everything's like, I can do it. I have no problem doing it if that's the wish of the board, I just need to know whether you want me to sit here or go do that.
Heather, I, I can do it Monday morning, if it's not a problem, uh, you say it wasn't a problem.
It's not a problem. Monday morning is great. Thank you, Chief.
How would the board wish to proceed?
I press.
I guess I just have a problem with the flip-flop way that we do things. So we get a new town administrator, we come up with this great process, everything goes really well, nobody has any problems, and then all of a sudden, we come up to a note that may or may not change based on the decision of the school committee, and now all of a sudden, we have to remove all the notes and go backwards. And so if the point is to move forward, then, and things have been going well, then I think we should continue moving forward. Now, if the school committee chooses to change their mind, or to give a different example, or a different note during the meeting, then the people that are there at the meeting can vote on that different note, can vote on the conversation that happens in the front of the room. They have, they're there, they're gonna hear it, but I, I just think if we're, if we're trying to come up with something that works, a format that works, a process that works, then to stop now and remove notes after we've had two meetings with notes, and it's helpful, just makes us take steps backwards.
I don't think we have to remove them, that's just a conversation we're talking about.
It isn't helpful for the warrant. We're only gonna be voting on the articles. It's 100% helpful in the meeting, voting on the motion under the article. The article, it, these notes have no room in the article, and they're not, they have no legality of that article. And they have no legal, you could change the note entirely at the meeting, completely. So essentially, it's only the article that is legally required to post, and nothing else. And the cleaner it is, the cleaner is. Yes, once we have a town meeting, and we want to educate the, the voters, and we give them as much information as we can, and whenever we want to have a meeting, uh, as the moderator does for the annual, and I don't know about this special, is to have an information meeting, then you can explain everything. But the article, the warning to the people, is strictly, simply the articles of the warrant.
Charlie?
Heather, this was reviewed by Town Council as is?
Including with the notes.
Including with the notes.
Aye aye.
And Town Council never came back and said, oh my God, why are you writing notes?
We've been doing notes, I just pulled up on my town government, um, one of the first ones we did was October 21st, 2014, warrant includes notes.
Then I move that we hold this format as is and move forward with these articles.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
For discussion?
If there's any more discussion.
I don't have any discussion.
Uh, you may have, is that what you wanted to discuss?
I, I just wanted to make the note that I wasn't trying to throw a wrench. Right, there's, the article, the first draft of the article I saw included that the article itself said, so that's why I was here, right? But the, the, the note, that's defensible, that, I've got not, no objective to it, no objection to it. And we do have a meeting between now and then, and, and if we have different words that we bring, that's fine, that's fine.
If it wasn't at such a late stage, we may change our mind, but boy, we're close.
So there's a motion on the floor in a second to keep the.
Format.
Format. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, John. Heather, which way would you like to go?
Um, Board of Health article, I think it's Article 15, probably page six, seven.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Are we, uh, voting on the article for the school?
I've changed it a few times, I'm sorry. So article.
On a motion on each article that we approve, or can we just pass over and approve all?
You can, I would say you can do all of them unless you object.
That's fine, I'm just.
Hold on, where are you going?
No, go ahead.
Come back, Shelley. So Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to transfer 3700, so $3,700 to the Board of Health wage item line, said some shall be taken from free cash FY15, or take any action related thereto.
So I'm pretty much here on Shelley O'Connell, Chair of the Board of Health. I'm here pretty much just because it was presented to Finance Committee and they did not recommend it. We had had this article back in May, and we were approached by Charlie and asked us not to go forward with it. So we stood, stood, stood down from it. So we were asked to wait and put it on at a later date, and now we are here at a later date. So I was not at the Finance Committee, at the Finance Committee meeting, Jerry was, my director, and Charlie was, so.
The reason that they didn't recommend it was what?
They felt that it was an unfair pay, pay increase for the employees. I must be candid, I don't agree with that simply because the way that was evolving. Back then, in fact, Art alluded to this with the whole personnel stuff, there was a lot of miscommunication going on and everything. The job descriptions, their pay scales were not met by the amount of money that was budgeted for them. They're getting paid at a lower rate than what was approved at by the Board of Health. This is to bring it back to where it should have been.
This was due to the increase in hours, right, that was added on last budget cycle?
Yeah, there was all kinds of things that were going back and forth with that. That's why I approached the Board of Health at the town meeting and said, would you please just pull this back? We'll bring it and revisit it, because there was just so much confusion on that, and I didn't wanna see them lose their entire budget to some minor controversies that were developing.
Does this go back to the PCFs with the rescoring of the job and.
PBB and rescore in the job, back and way back when, and it was, it was scored at 38, yes.
But that's what this all comes from then.
So then Lisa was going back to try to get the 37, and then that's when we were asked to back down in May. And we did, and we were asked to look at it again later, and that's what we're coming here today. Or that's why we put the article back on. And I'm here today just because Finance has denied, or not recommended it, and I'm just.
Did I move that this article be moved forward? I've got a question, but go ahead.
Well, you can second it.
I'll second it for a question. This is from Fiscal 15, is there, taken from Free Cash Fiscal 15.
But it's FY15 budget.
Right, but.
So Free Cash certified as of the end of June 30th.
So that's the appropriate fiscal year, okay.
So adding the 3,700 makes this total more, okay, I see, the numbers even are becoming clear.
This brings it up to.
38,820.
Eighty-two.
Well, gentlemen?
I made the motion, I made the second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay, but it passes, so you are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Which one's next?
Um, sorry, I'm just trying to do my notes.
Let's just jump around.
Um, I think we can go back to the beginning at this point. Oh, no, police, I wanna do the police ones, cause Mike wants to go home. Sometimes I like to be nice.
Which ones are they?
Uh, the first one that comes up, I think, let's see if we can scan this, is going to be Article 4, which doesn't really affect him. But what this one, or it does and it doesn't, I guess. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of 13,481 and 73 cents to the police chief's salary, said some shall be taken from the police chief incentive. So all this is, is a housekeeping matter. What we did a couple of years ago is we split out the police chief incentive from the police chief's salary, going forward with, um, starting with the interim contract for the police chief, and moving forward from there, we no longer have a separate thing called the police in, chief incentive, it's all part of the salary and part of the contract. So there is no longer, A, a need to have them separated, and B, it's actually harmful, cause we don't have the funds we need in the other account. So we're just doing a housekeeping market, it, thing on this.
It's gonna be short, by the way.
Do you have, know how much?
Twenty-two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
Twenty-two, fifty-one, ninety-one?
It's on the current, ninety-dollar, um, the current contract amount for the interim chief, what the new chief will get.
All right.
That number might change.
So we can worry about that next month.
Okay. Any objections?
No, I'll make a motion.
We don't, if there's no objections, I think we can move forward, okay.
Um, the next one on here to look at is going to be in Police Chief Land. It looks like Article 9, which is page five, so transfer from gas and electric town hall to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 to fund the modification of the Town Hall Police Station Building to change the entry. I thought I reduced this into less words, but maybe I didn't, and I can if I have to. The idea is to take $5,000, transfer it over to the Town Hall Police Station, and take the funds from the gas and electric town hall account, and what the purpose of this is, actually, Mike?
This has been brought up before, but it's to put a separate entryway into our booking room.
Thank you.
Do you remember that?
Yep.
Um, just the safety of the public and officers, instead of the arrestees going in through our main lobby, they would have their own entryway into the, directly into the booking room, to make it much safer. And it was also something brought up when the state came in and did our cell inspections. They questioned how we bring the prisoners in, and it really isn't an, is not an acceptable way that we do it now. So I said, why not fix it, put in a separate entryway and take care of that?
Any?
Yeah, I guess the question in general is, it looks like gas and electric for town hall is at 26%, should be at 50%, but we haven't gone through winter yet. What happens if we run out of money in this account?
So what happened, John, just to give you a background on this, if you remember last year when we were budgeting, we went high on electricity, cause the costs for electricity were predicted to soar. We then signed on with GDF SUEZ to flat-rate all of our electricity, and since doing so, we, you know, even doubling what we had and adding a little bit more, we had plenty left to utilize for other things we need. Instead of keeping the money caught up in electric and we're stuck, and you can't do anything till May, at least this way, we can use it on what we need.
So you're pretty comfortable that we're not gonna go over on that budget account, okay?
Well, if you leave all the lights on every day, I can't help you, but assuming that things continue as we are with our use.
Right, that second floor, uh, the lights are not left on, um, the heat, is it a very, very minimal? Just so we have no issues, but it's not really heated up there.
So we don't occupy any of that second floor, or main floor, whatever?
Not, not for daily usage.
Okay.
You know, we have a few things up there, but it's not that we spend any time up there.
I guess my only question is, Vicky, do you feel I need to amend that article? I thought I changed it once. Do I need to just say to Police Department for our town police station, or are you happy with the wording?
I really think it's Town Hall building expense, so.
I gotta say, I think it.
I didn't ask that question then.
Do, do you want me to just put it to Town Hall building expenses, is that easier? Cause sometimes I, I get, you know, go back and forth whether it's easier to put it in an already existing account, and whether to create a separate account for a specific purpose sometimes.
I am not gonna create a separate account, I'm gonna have to.
Okay, so then I'm just gonna make it say $5,000 to Town Hall building expenses.
Have we gotten quotes on this?
I, I have two so far, um, one being, well, I have two quotes.
Over or under 5,000?
Under.
Okay.
Under. So I'm waiting for the third.
So where would the excess go, just stay in that account, if we do it for 4,000?
Yes. I would only create a new account if we were taking something from stabilization to fund something, but this is just transferred to a budget line, so they don't just stay in that budget line and follow. If it was from stabilization, I mean, you said, has to go back.
Yep, okay. So if, just to clarify what the article comes out to, based on my notes here, it would come out to, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 to the Town Hall building expenses, said some shall be taken from gas and electric town hall line item, or take any action related thereto.
I'm fine with that, hi. Any issues?
Just one semi-related, is it just me, or should we start calling this the Town Hall, since we've been here a long time? You know, we need to address that down. That's just always confusing. I mean, that's, that's the police department, I'm sorry, and this is the Town Hall. So maybe in the new budget process, we can label this stuff, right?
They did that originally because we were talking about.
Oh, yeah, but we've been here a while. So can we do that in the, this year's budget? Thank you. Uh, I have no other questions.
Okay, we can move on. Anything else for the police?
Uh, yeah, we have one more for the police department, so Article 10, the next item on that page, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 to the Police Department wage item line, said some shall be taken from the operating stabilization.
Looking for the attached, the attached sheet.
Yeah, it's at the back, it's attachment C, so there's concern of overspending in the budget. Vicky did a really nice job of breaking out what expenses we did not expect to incur this year. Some of the things, I believe we have here, let's see what you were, estimated shortfall balance due to a culmination of resignations, retirement, disability, all those shifts needed to be covered, most of the overtime from, was from full-time officers. FY15 budget included allocation of $33,000 from stabilization, as chief determined that, right, so that was just some history with regards to where the money had come from in the prior budget, instead of taking, I think at that time, we did things a little bit differently with capital, so.
So can I just make, make sure that I'm clear here, if you transfer this, this $10,000, does that bring this estimated shortfall down? So then we're still short about $800.
Potentially, yes, depending on how all the.
Potentially.
And we had originally funded this, the police department, at 100%, but because of retirements, and that, that's why we're short.
Well, yeah, that, um, I had an officer out for three months or so.
Extenuating circumstances have made us short, not because we didn't fund it where it should have been in the first place.
Depends who you talk to, right?
But yes.
Part of it was that, cause last year, um, we gave.
The money for the cruiser to the, yes.
We didn't, we spent it all.
Right.
So I guess a question, so we had the people out before, in the first half of the year. The expense report here says through the end of December, we're pretty much at where we should be at 51%. So if we had all these things in the first six months, the last six months should be better, and we should stay on track.
We're hoping, uh, there was less court time, because officers weren't out on patrol. As you can see, the revenue was much less than what it had been, because we have not been out there. So if there is more court time, if there are larger cases, more people are called in, you know, the fluctuation can happen at any time.
But we don't know that now, and it's right on budget now, so I, I think we're jumping the cart here, or whatever.
So if it ends up at the end of the year that that money isn't there, we transfer at the meeting in May? Or it goes back to free cash if it doesn't get spent?
Yeah, it comes out of stabilization.
It's go back to stabilization.
We'd have to vote on that, though, right?
So six of one, half a dozen of another.
Wouldn't we have to vote it back in?
I don't know, if you don't, if you, you think parts of it, you don't have to vote it back in.
I, I, I can tell you that, uh, you know, now that we have made another sergeant's position, that, that midnight person is no longer, he's now on four to 12, so we're gonna need to be staffing the midnight shift with officers, so there's two people on.
But we have been doing that through the, the budget had two officers in on every shift.
We have, and now, so what I'm saying is, um, we're gonna be short an actual full-time body.
But that money is in the budget already for that body.
Correct.
Okay, so this wouldn't.
Correct, we're gonna, right, we had discussions in regards to another full-time officer.
You can choose to wait till May, because there's still gonna be.
Yeah, money's there.
And we'll have a better handle on how much, whether it's gonna be or not be, but.
Yeah. Uh, to advance money when it's not needed, at this point, I think gives the wrong signal myself, so I would defer to me.
It probably will be needed, but if you choose to.
Historically, it's been needed.
Yeah, that's why I think we should just do it now. Historically, he's saying, no, the chief's saying, because of issues that were one-time issues, not historically, we funded it fully. Well, that's, that's what the conversation went. Well, I still think it should be funded.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll move that we approve this article.
I'll second it, for further discussion and vote. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor of funding Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Okay, passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so now jumping back to the beginning, and I'm gonna kinda whip through this, cause I have 11 minutes before we are no longer on TV.
Can I just ask, are there ones that you know will require conversation that we should do?
Oh, I hope not.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, do you anticipate, Vicky or Mr. Floyd, any?
It's, it's in 11 minutes, so if I just roll, I'm sure they'll jump up.
Okay.
Um, so the first one is prop, the first one is property acquisition, this is just the Safe Roots to School article. This allows us to actually go in and either compensate individuals for their property, or to ta, allow us to take the property by donation or other means. What this is, is this comes to the Safe Roots to School project along the corridor of Route 10. Uh, it goes off a side street here and there, but essentially, it is a, they've revised it to an eight-foot wide sidewalk. These are simply temporary construction easements that we are going for, there's no permanent easements anywhere in this. This article has been handed back to us by Town Council with the language that they liked. We are working very closely with DOT on this one, and we are also beginning to set up meetings with the, with the abutters. Charlie's just laughing, cause this has been a couple bumpy roads for this project. But, but we're moving forward with that one, so unless you guys have any questions, I'd like to go onto the, yes?
I believe it appears to.
I believe it appears to, or it may appear to some that this would be a blank check. So are there limitations?
There's no money piece to this.
It says to acquire, to purchase.
Yes, but there's, there's no money. To acquire, to purchase, we're not using any money from town funding at all. If we have any money, it's through Chapter 90 funds.
I know that. It's Chapter 90 funds. So when money is, we have to be reimbursed by DOT by the end of September or something.
But we don't need, I, I guess that would be more of a accounting piece on Vicky's end. But essentially what we do is when we figure out what the cost, if anything, we have to reimburse folks for using the temporary construction easements. We put a petition into Chapter 90 and then you're right, we pay and then they pay back. But I believe, Vicky, if I'm not mistaken, we're allowed to hold that line. I, we do Chapter 90 funds all the time, correct? Where we do the project and then they pay us when they get to it?
Well, what happens is this, Randall has to submit the application to DOT. They need to approve it. Randall will spend it. He'll have to submit a reimbursement to the Department of Transportation. If we do not submit the reimbursement by September 30th, any money we've spent that's negative in free cash in Chapter 90 comes out in our free cash.
So we may be purchasing in fiscal 16 and getting reimbursement in fiscal 17.
As long as we, we turn the reimbursement in by September 30th, then we're good and I can accrue the funds. If we don't, we eat the money.
But could we be paying out in this fiscal year for some of these easements, like?
We, we don't even know if we're going to be paying out for any easements. And part of this, so what it comes down to is this. We essentially approach the landowner. We say, this is what's happening. You have the right to have your property assessed and be compensated a fair value, to which at that point we have an assessor come out after we've done all of them. Not a town assessor, a private company. They figure out what the cost of the property is. We're not talking large dollar sums on any of these temporary easements. At which point, prior to that, we actually sit down with town council, have her run some numbers of estimated expectations from the past, and we put the Chapter 90 piece in. There's no money being transferred at all on this article. It's simply giving the board a selectment.
I said it would appear to some that there was no limit on what somebody could charge the town or the town could pay for, but as long as we're all on the same page. Is there a, a time limit for the temporary construction easements since it isn't permanent?
It's for the period of the project.
For the period of the project or no, not to exceed? Okay.
Can I ask a question? Well, can you ask a question? But we're not the first town to have safe routes to school. So is this the same language that other towns have used?
Town council gave it to us. They modified DOT's language and this is the language they want. Colbman and Page works with numerous communities throughout the state. And the woman who actually was working with us on this, this is all she does, land acquisition.
And I've spoken to some of the large property owners and they're not looking for any compensation. They know what's going on.
I understand your concern, Robert. I get it. Okay. Any concerns on the board?
Only what he.
Only Mr. Floyd's.
Okay. Am I moving on?
Yep.
Awesome. Article two, this one came up. This is the PEG access fund. This is adopting a master and a law in order to actually use the PEG access fund that we've had quite a while. This is our public education programming. And what happened on this was, it came to Vicky's attention very recently, either yesterday or today, I think. Does that sound right?
Yeah, it needs to be adopted by the end of 2016 because it might have to affect 2012, 2013. That its towns had to adopt it in the name of actual master and law. We didn't adopt it and it won't be able to, because the PEG access fund is over.
Oh, well, we better adopt this so we can keep televising our lively meetings.
You can. You just wouldn't have money anymore.
Right. Any concerns?
Article three, oh, sorry, Vicky, where are you still going? Article three is a CPC article. This is the one that Virginia alluded to. It's to transfer $16,000 to fund the Conan Park Pavilion roof. Said some's coming from community preservation surcharges, undesignated account.
No trouble. Anybody?
Who's going to be, are they going to be doing the purchasing or are you going to be doing the purchasing for the construction?
So that always becomes a CPC question, but I would say that when we come down to it, because it's a town project and it's going to the Parks Commission, that they're going to be visiting me and we're going to have a blast.
Okay, so, so the money wouldn't be going to a committee, it would be going to the town to.
It would be going to, I think, the Parks Commission. Yes. All right, next one down here. Article four, we did that one. Article five is e-permitting. This is what we talked about the last meeting. Transfer $2,000 to e-permitting system for the building department. Said some shall be taken from building clerical wages. We currently have a balanced building clerical because we have a very kind volunteer, Lawrence, who does all of the clerical work in the building department at no cost to the town. As such, when we put a minimal amount in this budget line at the beginning of the year, it was just in case. At this point, it is, been asked by both Art and also the building commissioner that we take this money and put it towards e-permitting system, which they feel they desperately need to better account for building permits and better keep track of things in town. And the 2,000 is only half of the year because that's all we're going to be funding it for until the next fiscal and then the full cost will be 4K a year. Questions?
No concerns?
Okay, the next one is down under number seven. This is $5,000 to transfer to the Larrabee, Larrabee town hall building expenses, it should read. The sums should be taken from the gas and electric Larrabee account. What this is, is we just need the money to cover the unexpected things that keep popping up in town hall, like little mini balloons. It's an analogy. I am. Any questions? Okay, so the, the next one is the Finance Committee Reserve. They had asked for this initially at the last town meeting and there were questions that weren't answered. So they, I believe it was voted no. But essentially this is to put $2,500 back in the Finance Committee Reserve Fund and it's to be taken from the gas and electric Larrabee account.
Was this the $2,500 that was transferred to the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay. No concerns? Moving on.
Next one, we did, we did number 10, number 11, 12, and 13. So last year, the board of selectmen actually sat down, came up with a free cash policy. They said when we get free cash certified, we'd like to put 35 percent in capital, 30 percent in operating, 10 percent in our OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits account that I believe last time we had an assessment, we were about $760,000, give or take, that we need to start working towards. And what this will do is this will take our original free cash FY15 number of 222,104 and to split in those three ways, the 35 percent would be 77,736 to capital, 66,631 to operating, that's 30 percent, and the 10 percent of 22,210 to OPEB. Questions? The next one is Article 14, we did with the Board of Health. Article 15, so as we alluded to earlier, when John Fitzpatrick was up, we have a COLA for union and non-union. The board of selectmen voted last year sometime to say that if we were to move forward with union contracts and they were to get a COLA, we would start being fair to the non-union employees and treat them with the same COLA. That case, it's come down to 2 percent, 2 percent across the board. And essentially what this article does is it transfers firm free cash to the FY16 budget, the amount of $33,441. This does not include those who have a one-time stipend, those who, there's one other exclusion here. And then it also does not include elected officials. Unfortunately, under Chapter 41, Section 108A, we are unable to include elected officials in this modification due to the fact that we fixed the salaries at annual town meeting. Even though it's a special town meeting and we usually could do it by two-thirds vote, we can't because we've already fixed the tax rate. We actually checked with DOR and town council on this one and actually received an opinion that came from DOR to the town of Southampton because we requested it back in 1999. That answered the same question. So now we're all apprised. We all know the situation. What we're hoping to do is in good faith, make up for that where the 2 percent will continue for the next two fiscal years, where it comes down to the elected officials, which only include the town clerk and the treasurer. We'd like to see that next year when we do the budgeting, instead of doing 2 percent for them, we do 2 percent on 2 percent. So it's a little bit over what the 4 percent would be, but it's the same as everyone else would get. So it's equally treating those similarly situated. Questions? Did you get all that?
You're going to have to slow down a little bit. Thank you. So two cents, you'll notice in this column, the, the police chief is not in here, the interim police chief, because his, he has a contract and his contract does not say that he is allowed the same increases as the rest of the town hall employees. Where mine, Heather's, and the fire chiefs all say, if there's an increase, we get that same increase. His does not state that.
Right.
So that's why his is not in here. The other two categories that are in here are fire wages and ambulance wages because there is enough money in those accounts already to, to absorb the 2 percent increase. I don't want to put money in there if there's already money allowable in there to cover that 2 percent. So that's why those aren't in there.
Okay, any concerns? Article 16.
Is this the last one? So if this is the last one, what this is, is this for a prop two and a half for $135,000 for the fire department second shift EMS services. This is something that was on last year. It actually got approved at a town meeting, then it went to the vote. It did not pass at the vote. The idea in the discussion and the news have all stated that. It seems that if we'd like to consistently move forward with our ambulance service and keep the level of coverage and provide to the town, that we would need to actually invest in a second shift to ensure that people were available to cover. The cost we've calculated is 135,000, give or take, but that's the number we'd be looking for. Again, this is a prop two and a half question, so this raises taxes up. I think we will, before we get to the motion side of this, Vicky, myself, and Donna can make sure we include what the increase is on people's tax rate as we move forward. We believe it was very minimal, though.
When is the anticip, are you, are we going to try and plan and have a?
So we have to have a, actually voting election within a certain number of days afterwards. I think it's like 90 or something like that.
Which is that going to cost that we didn't?
Well, hold on a second. So what we're looking at doing is seeing if we can jump on to the presidential primary in March. You generally can have multiple things there. You just have to have a separate set of election workers, but it cuts down on the cost. I, I know, the TV's gone, but we're still recording, so. We only had a three-hour window, John. You missed it.
Now, do we have tape rolling?
We, we still have, the lights behind Virginia are red and green. So people, when they see this online, should still be hearing my voice, hopefully.
So I guess.
I thought it was. Did I misstate it?
I guess my concern is about putting it on here and having to have that, you know, piggybacking on the presidential election is that people probably aren't anticipating an override vote at a special town meeting or one that would get us to an override vote. Historically, you have them at the annual town meeting and people expect that if you're going to raise their tax rate or something, that's when it happens.
So one of the reasons it ended up on this piece, well, first of all, the board of selectmen at the last meeting asked the fire chief to put this on. They, they did. I don't know if this was the meeting you missed, Liz.
Would be the one meeting you would miss.
So, but, but the thing to keep in mind is, this is actually really smart on our part and also the town's part. And this is why, because if we're asking about FY17 now and it does not pass, and let's say we go tomorrow to whenever, we know as we're budgeting for next year, that it didn't pass. So it's going to change the direction we budget one way or the other. But either way, instead of having to wait till July 1st vote or June something vote, we know this fiscal year, what's going to happen next fiscal year.
And I would go to bat for the schools and say, they would love to have this happen right now so that they don't have to try and get the parents out to vote in July when they're on vacation with their kids. And I, I, I think, to be fair, I, I get what you're saying, but we're asking for overrides for all sorts of departments in the town, not just one. And to ask for it now for one and not for all, in my opinion, is not the right thing to do.
We've asked for all and got nowhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is important enough.
So between the last meeting on December, whatever, we've asked the school to, to put in for an override? No?
No, no, no. He's talking about the past.
The highway to put in for an override? We've asked the police department to put in for an override? We've asked them to put that on this warrant?
The only ones that, the only one that came to us was the fire chief.
I understand. And to do our due diligence as the board of selectmen and what is right for the town, if every May, we have the same people asking for one, but we're only going to give it to the fire chief right now or the fire department, excuse me, does not seem fair and equitable.
Well, remember, we've got a timeframe here we have to deal with for October because there's a state mandate that we've got to have it in place by October. So we need to get it going and up for the next fiscal year.
If that's the direction that the board chooses to take.
Correct.
Okay, well, I would, can I make a motion?
We don't, unless you want to take it off, but you know.
I don't want, I don't want to take it off. I just want it to be noted that I, I don't approve. So if somebody wants to make a motion to keep it, that would be lovely.
Well, it's already on there, so we don't need a motion, right?
Well, we've taken one for every other one where someone has a disagreeance with keeping it on there.
I move that we keep this article on the town warrant.
Is there a second?
What if we don't have a second? It just stays there, right?
The same thing that's happened with every other one where somebody had a disagreeance, where somebody voted no. So somebody makes a motion.
So you want to go on record as voting no?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Thank you. All those in favor of keeping this on the warrant, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Nay.
You only get one nay.
I meant to say, say nay.
So now I make a motion that all other articles that were not voted on, we vote on. And I move that they all be voted favorably to be placed on the warrant.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there any, can we keep going tonight or do we, can we stop? We can keep going? Okay. Well, if it's up to me, I might vote no right now.
If we could finish the agenda, that'd be great.
All right, let's finish the agenda. We have a review and discussion of the solar bylaws. The planning board has asked us to look over their current draft of the proposed bylaws and the changes. Are there any concerns from the board of selectmen? I have not looked at the proposed plans of the bylaws.
Question on that, when it came up, I, I made a note. The bylaws, we, we need to review. We haven't had a chance. And also some job descriptions, if I remember correctly, we need to review, right? Can we put a special select board meeting together just for these topics so that we can get them off the agenda? Because they've been, you know, sitting out there and they're important ones to get done. I mean, P Q B, the job descriptions.
We had talked about having a special meeting independent for just the bylaw, which I thought was a good idea. I don't think we scheduled that.
Right.
But that's a long, lengthy discussion. I don't think that we should add other things to it.
You don't think we could do two job descriptions that are hanging out there? I think we could add those on there.
I don't think we have any job descriptions hanging out there, John, because I think we're waiting for the wage and class plan.
Yeah, we moved that.
Oh, we stopped because of it.
Triple PV is going to be looking at interviewing everyone who works for the town, minus the school employees.
I did review this and I do have one concern. And that's if you look at the right of the property owner, the only right there is is to play.